Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
For the April 26th City Council meeting, we're starting in a little bit of an unusual hour. We have much ground to cover and we wanted to make sure we had ample time in which to do it. But we do want to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that is by invoking God's presence. And so I'm going to ask Reverend Danny Deeth from First Presbyterian Church here in Columbus to come to the podium and get us kicked off.
All right, good to see everybody. Thank you for the honor to serve you as you are seeking to serve so many. Let's go to God in prayer. Let's pray. Lord God, it's already the end of a day. It's been a day, and we're just getting started. We would ask that for this council, for those who have gathered, that you help us to feel your Spirit in this place. Lord, sometimes we look at the world and it is just a damn mess. But in here, we have control about the way that we will treat each other, about the way to show respect, both for those that we agree with and especially for those whom we disagree with. Let the conversations be blessed. Let us hear one another. Let us feel the passion, but communicate in a way that shows that we are all in this together to make this beloved community better. And Lord, we pray that as we look at our agenda, that we would know that it's more than just words, for the words represent the way that people are living and seeking to learn and live and be healthy and grow in this community. So give them the right blend of sugar, caffeine, and your Spirit to stay focused, to get the work of these people, your people, done. Bless them, Lord, and lead them through this meeting. For it is in the risen Christ that we pray. Amen.
Reverend Deeth, thank you. And thank you for what you do, you and your church do in the community. I know that your congregation participates in a, I think, a real valuable service to the citizens of this community with your First at First on the first Sunday of each month. And I would encourage the community, folks that are watching, is it five?
Yeah, 5:00.
5:00. And they take on and tackle different issues going on within the community. It's incredibly informative. It's a great opportunity for you to keep up with what's going on. Didn't mean to put in a shameless plug, but I know it's it's a really good event, and we appreciate you doing it on an ongoing basis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to do the proclamation first? Okay. All right. First, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 12th. Motion for the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Are there any edits or deletions or any changes that anybody'd like to make? All right, hearing none. Bruce, you cue it. Or we just do a voice vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. And we have, we've started the business meeting and we have a request to go into executive session. And that frankly is one of the reasons, the biggest reason for starting this meeting at 4:00, so that we don't keep our staff and some of you out here until midnight tonight. So we might be able to get through it a little quicker. So I will, we're going to go into Mr. City Attorney. It's for potential litigation and...
Potential and actual litigation. Mayor, security plans and real estate acquisition.
Okay. All right. So I need a motion to go into exec... Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. All right, we are, we are back in session. We went into executive session to discuss litigation, property acquisition, and security issues. And I'm going to turn it over to the City Attorney. Didn't we have one item? Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if you want to make an announcement about the...
Oh, yeah, I will. We'll wait until we get a quorum in here.
Yeah.
Now, we, we have a, an audit that is going to be presented to council this evening. It was scheduled to be presented on the 10th along with another public safety audit. But because of a mayoral candidate that filed an open records request and was, filed a suit subsequent to that to ask for this audit that was at that particular point not even complete to be disseminated, we did not want the citizens of Columbus to have to incur any legal expenses. So the auditor went ahead and worked overtime and tried to get this thing fixed up so that it could now be distributed. Our ordinances indicate that it must be presented to the mayor and to the council simultaneously, even though this audit was actually done with a constitutional officer's request for a transition. So it'll be distributed to council around the table.
All right, that covers that item, Mayor. The transition audit of the Sheriff's Department is now a public record and can be distributed to any media or concerned party.
Okay.
I know you've got items you want to call up.
We do. Well, actually, we want to go ahead and try to issue the proclamations. The first proclamation we have is for Georgia Cities Week. And Counselor Crabbe is going to present that. And Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin will come up to receive.
Everyone here? Okay. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and one with the most direct impact upon its residents. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to the understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a significant time to recognize the critical role played by city government in our lives. And whereas this week offers a significant opportunity to spread the word to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Week offers a significant opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. And whereas the mayor and city council encourage all citizens, government officials, and government employees to do everything possible to ensure this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through 30th, 2022, as Georgia Cities Week.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. You know, this is the 23rd year that the Georgia Municipal Association has recognized Georgia Cities Week. And Columbus is doing something a little different this year. Each year, as you recall, we would come to you with the If I Were Mayor contest. And so this year, we want to do something a little bit different, and we wanted to be able to highlight the services of the city and city government to our, our community. And so these department directors that are here with me have planned some things. We have already kicked off Georgia Cities Week, and we're going to just kind of go through and let you know what each of them have done and will be doing throughout the week. So that we want you to be a part of that. We want our citizens to be a part of that. And of course, we have some activities for our employees as well. So the very first thing that we are going to share with you, and as the representative, when I put their slide up, they will come, I didn't let you know who they are, the department that they are with, what they have done. And we've asked them to do no more than two minutes. Two minutes, okay.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Chief Daniel Hoard, Columbus Fire Department. To kick off Georgia Cities Week, we hosted our first annual open house. We had that done at our drill field and at Station 9. We had a tour of the station. We had, we did some demonstrations to highlight our response capabilities. We did a high-angle rope rescue demonstration. We did a vehicle machinery extrication. We did that, we narrated that so people could understand what we were doing and why we do it. We also did, we had the Boys and Girls Club, some school buses there from Girls Inc., and a number of folks from the community come out and join us. We did a full response where they sat back and got to watch what happens when all of our units respond onto scene. And we narrated that event for them so that they could understand not just what we were doing, but the purpose behind it. We had a great turnout, and we feel like it's something we'll build off of each year. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. And for, I am Rob Landers, the Director of the Columbus Civic Center. And we also started early with Georgia Cities Week and this Saturday with the home opener of the Columbus Lions' first home game for the season. So what we did was we did a community tailgate. We sent it out to various members of the community, and we invited several schools and organizations to come out to be a part of our tailgate. We had Kendrick High School be the band, lead band during our tailgate. And we also did a player walk. So for a lot of the youth organizations that are part of Columbus Youth Football, they were able to see a behind-the-scenes with some of the players. They were able to do what we called a player walk. So they were able to walk with the players and high-five the fans as they came through. But this was a program that we did to not only have a teamwork, partnership with the Columbus Lions and the community, because we wanted to foster a community around our Columbus Lions and how we can celebrate together. And this was our first event that we did as a partnership and a tailgate for the entire community.
And this event is the shred day event that took place on this past Saturday in conjunction with Columbus Technical College and Keep Columbus Beautiful. I understand the event went very well, where community were able to come out, bring their items to be shredded. And so this, of course, has been an annual event as well.
With 311, we had our citizens come into the lobby as they enter and exit the lobby of the building, of this building. They were able to register for our notification civic ready system. As of yesterday, we had 78 total citizens registered for the new system so that they will be able to receive emergency notifications or any kind of public notifications that goes out. And my name's Tiaja Johnson, 311 Director.
Good evening. I'm Maria Bentley, County Extension Director with Carrefour Extension. So what we planned was a Get Georgia Growing Day. And what we did was we had a program where we invite the citizens in to come in and talk about planned spring and summer vegetables. And then with that, we talked about harvesting. Then we had food demonstrations. Then we followed them with some tastings. So we had a great, great turnout.
Good evening. I'm Freddie Blackman, Police Chief with Columbus Police Department. And during Georgia Cities Week last night, we observed an active shooter training for civilians. It's designed for civilians to develop a response plan, whether they were in the church group or business community, workplace in the business community. So our Training Division came out and communicated with individuals we conducted in this building, in this particular room. And we had a packed house last night where we communicated ideas so our citizens will be able to develop a response plan in the event and after shooter incident were to occur. In addition to that, on Wednesday, tomorrow, we will be holding a hiring event for our police department. So whether you're a 911 employee, police officer, or police cadet, and you're looking for a job, meet us at South Cummins tomorrow, starting at 9:00 a.m. and lasting until 2:00 p.m.
Good evening. I'm Becky Summerlin, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. This year, to celebrate this event, we are going to have an online trivia contest for the citizens. It'll be on the 27th. They will get with us on our Facebook page and put in a unique pin that they'll get. And the questions will start from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. During that time, whoever gets the most questions the fastest will, of course, be proclaimed the winner. And they'll get a small prize from Parks and Recreation. And again, the trivia contest is called, What Do You Know About Columbus?
Good evening. My name is Jim Arndt. I'm the Golf Director for the City of Columbus. And our event is an introduction to golf. We're going to have it at Oxbow Creek Golf Course, where we can showcase one of the city's facilities. And even though it's an introduction to golf, if there are any current golfers that are interested, we'll be ready for them too. We'll have instruction. We'll have refreshments. Coca-Cola's there to, they have a promotional truck that'll be there to help out with instruction, I'm sorry, with refreshments and some music and maybe a couple of other fun things. But basically, it's just to showcase one of the city's golf facilities and show people what we can do at Oxbow Creek.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drell Short. I'm the Director of Public Works. And we are so excited about our activity. Tomorrow, starting at 9:00 a.m., we will have our annual rodeo. And that is a rodeo that is not your standard rodeo with the live animals. We're not going to bring any of those down. But they're using all of the various pieces of equipment that we use in our daily, daily work. That's everything from an excavator to a side loader. And they actually have to compete and do different tasks in order to be the best. If they win, they go on to the state APWA Conference for their competition. And if they win that, they go on to the nationals. So we really want them to bring back the title to Columbus, Georgia. We've got some great people doing it, and I'm expecting great things out of them. We've also got our annual, well, our first annual, I guess I should say, citywide job fair. And all of these departments that are here, a lot of them will be present. We are really encouraging our community to come out and join us. And if they're looking for a job, we'll have so many people there and equipment for them to talk to and look at. It's something that we are really hoping will garner some people for me, because I need people. But it will go from 9:00 to 2:00. We'll be on the east parking lot at the Civic Center. We also have food trucks that are going to be there. So if you want to come down for lunch, please do come down. They'd love to see you all. They may even put you on a bulldozer, let you play with the button, but not do anything really. But we invite you all to come out, and we hope to see you tomorrow.
Good evening. My name is Rob Scott. I'm the Director of Community Reinvestment. We're excited to participate in tomorrow's event. As many of you know nationally, and especially here at City of Columbus, that there's an affordable housing crisis that we're in the middle of. As our population grows, many of our citizens are continuing to experience the challenges related to affordable housing. So as an initial step to address housing affordability via homeownership, the Community Reinvestment Department is pleased to announce the rebranding and increase of its affordable, our Down Payment Assistance Program, Sweet Home Columbus. The Sweet Home Columbus Down Payment Assistance Program has increased its down payment assistance, maximum amount of assistance, by $4,975. The program now provides up to $14,975 in down payment assistance to households who are under 80% of the area median income. In addition to the rebranding with the help of Ms. Emma Kimbrough, our department has published an 18-page pamphlet called City of Columbus: Affordable Housing 101, The Basics. The pamphlet contains valuable information about affordable housing, what it is, what it is not, as well as discusses and explores affordable housing myths, realities, and to discuss its benefits. We are looking forward to representing our city during Georgia Cities Week and have invited lenders and pre-purchasing housing counseling partners to tomorrow's event. Please join us tomorrow for affordable housing information and other giveaways. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Rita Halliwell with Human Resources. It is my pleasure to join with my colleagues here as we celebrate Georgia Cities Week. And we will be partnering with, the City of Columbus will be partnering with Goodwill Industries to host a huge hiring fair tomorrow. And I do emphasize hiring fair, because that is our goal. For interested persons that are interested in working and joining our team, show up tomorrow at the Civic Center between 9:00 and 2:00 p.m. Be prepared to interview on the spot by some of these wonderful departments that you see here. There will be a host of us there. And we are excited to be able to offer viable employment with the Columbus Consolidated Government. So we are excited for a variety of jobs. The Chief of Police was here, from public safety to general government to our courts. But we are excited to be able to meet the community, greet the community, and show them what, why Columbus is amazing. Thank you.
And we have a great event on Thursday. And this is going to be Lunch with the City Manager. So we invite you, we invite all of our employees to come out and be a part of the Lunch with the City Manager and celebrate our city manager, the longest-serving city manager that we have ever had. And so come and let's break bread with him. It's going to be, again, from 11:30 to 2:00 on the Plaza of the Government Center. We have put flyers at your table. You see what the menu looks like. It's going to be very nice. And again, it's all sponsored. Haven't spent a dime on it. Everything is sponsored. And so we do invite you to come out. There are going to be a lot of door prizes, music, and the like. And so we ask city employees to make sure you have your city ID with you in order to receive a ticket for the door prizes. We will need your city ID. So again, we look forward to seeing each of you on Thursday from 11:30 to 2:00 to have lunch with our city manager.
Oh, we got, come on.
Oh, we've got a couple more.
We got a few more?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Felicia Marshall, and I'm with the Job Training Division. Mr. Howard Pennington is our Director, and I'm the Assistant Director there. And what we would be doing for the Georgia City Week, we would be hosting a job fair again with Ms. Halliwell and the rest of the team. And also, we're going to be having Family Feud. And so a lot of people don't know about our department, the Job Training Division. We serve eight counties here, out of 159 counties in Georgia. And what we do is we pay up to $10,000 to retool individuals and get them back out into the workforce. So I'm not going to say too much, because we have a Family Feud game tomorrow. And so please come out and join us. We have door prizes and gifts. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Rosa Evans, Director of Metro Transit System. We invite you to come out and celebrate Georgia Cities Week with us and our staff at Metro. This Saturday, April 30th, anyone can ride Metro free. Metro fixed route buses free. The buses start at 4:30 a.m. The last lineup is at 6:30 p.m. So you can come out, you know, just explore the city. A lot of people will use public transit just to learn the city and learn where places are, because buses travel throughout the city. So we invite you to come out, visit Uptown. Uptown is vibrant. Go out to Columbus Park Crawson, the National Infantry Museum. Bring your family, bring your kids. We have military people who just bring their children to get on a bus, just because children are fascinated with buses. So we invite you to come out. Also, the counselors, we, in your gift bags, you have some one-way passes. So if you decide to get on a bus before Saturday, you can use your one-way pass and ride this week or anytime. But do come out if you can, if your schedule permits. On Saturday, we're going to have a lot of fun. Face covering is not required, although the CDC says it's a safe thing to do. We invite you to come out. And so we celebrate this with you all.
Okay, that ends the presentation on Georgia Cities Week. Let's just give our department directors another round, because they've worked very hard. And I would be remiss if, but I did not thank my right hand, Altese Wilson, for helping to put all of this together, your gift bags and all of that. So thank you.
Yeah, and Ms. Goodwin, we just want to encourage everybody to take advantage of this opportunity to go see what goes on in their city government. And that's what Georgia Cities Week is about. It's so that people can take a look at some of the services provided and just how engaged our departments are. And I got to say, over the last two years, their job has been made much more difficult, and they have done an exemplary job of serving the citizens. So thank all of you for what you do. I've got a proclamation here for Ms. Goodwin. If all of you are, those that are comfortable, come around, we'll at least fist bump and tell you congratulations. We have a comment from Counselor Woodson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin and everyone, thank you very much for all you do. I know you don't get enough thank yous for all the hard work and sacrifice you and your family do for us in the city. I do have one request. There's so many great events there. And I know I couldn't write fast enough or take pictures fast enough. Is there anywhere a list of that can be sent to it or sent to the Clerk of Council so she could put it on the calendar or something so we know where we can go and where and what time?
Absolutely. And we did put that in your package as well.
Oh, it's in this package?
Yes, we put it in your package. We're going to be getting photos of all of these events so that we could send them to GMA, because we want to see hours and lights as well.
Woo-hoo, that's from Tom, all right. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure, maybe we can put it out in CCG so the audience, people that were watching or missing will know where all these events are. And they can attend to help celebrate.
Thank you.
Great. Thank all of you. And before you sit down, I'm going to let you stay in place, and I'm going to ask you to kind of swap who's at the podium. So I'm going to invite Rick Jones to the podium. So I'm going to invite Rick Jones to the podium. Counselor Thomas has a very special and somewhat bittersweet proclamation to read to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say before I start this that Rick's son, J.W., couldn't be with us today, but I bet he's at home watching his dad. So this is for J.W. as well as for Rick. Whereas James William Rick Jones II was hired in 1988 as the Planning Division Chief of the Department of Community Development, became the Director of Community Development in 1993, then the Transportation Planning Division Manager in 2002, and the Director of Planning in 2005. And whereas Rick Jones received degrees from Columbus College, now Columbus State University, in 1975 with a Bachelor of Science in Community Development and a Master's of Urban and Regional Planning from the University of Mississippi in 1982. And whereas Rick Jones is a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and has served as Chair of the Georgia Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations and on the Board of the Georgia Planning Association. And whereas Rick Jones has guided and directed the development and implementation of this city's through the, through the comparative, wait a minute, through the comparative plan for the past 30 years. I haven't been here that long, but we, as mandated by Georgia state law. And whereas Rick Jones has been instrumental and the driving force behind the development of the Unified Development Ordinance that governs zoning and subdivision development, which also includes updates to the city's sign ordinance, tree ordinance, landscaping, and buffering ordinance, and the development of the wireless communications facility, cellular community communications ordinance. And whereas Rick Jones helped establish and develop the current site tax allocation, eight tax allocation districts to support new commitment economic development opportunities throughout the community. And whereas Rick Jones implemented an overlay districts that helped establish aesthetic development requirements for the major gateways into our community that include Second Avenue, River Road, Manchester Expressway, Veterans Parkway, Victory Drive, and US 80 Beaver Run. And whereas Rick Jones led the effort to ensure that our community participated and received as accurate population count during the 1990, 2000, 2010, and 2020 US Census. And whereas Rick Jones met the challenge to help organize the community to address air quality issues that could have had a dramatic effect on the health and lifestyle of our citizens in our community and regionally as well. Whereas Rick Jones has led the community through the initiation and/or completion of several transportation projects, including the Fall Line Trace, Columbus River Walk, Veterans Parkway Streetscapes, Winon Road Streetscapes, US 27 Custer Road Interchange, Buena Vista Road Interchange at 185, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Streetscapes, Buena Vista Road Spiderweb Project, Casita, Old Casita Road 185 Interchange, 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge, and Mont's Green Plaza. Whereas, the Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, Isaiah Hughley, congratulate the Director of Planning, James William Rick Jones II, upon his retirement on April 30th, 2022, and express our deep appreciation to him for his 34 years of dedicated service to this community, this council, and this government, the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2022, as Rick Jones Day.
Sometimes you hear stuff like that, you have to look around the room and see who they're talking about.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for this recognition and honor. I hope though that you will indulge me just for a few moments, for after all, I have indulged many of you over the years. Thirty-four years is a long time. And over that time, I have served seven mayors, four city managers, and attended council meetings in at least five different rooms. Mr. Mayor, pro tem. You might appreciate this for what, for it really is six different rooms if you, if you count, excuse me, if you include six different rooms, if you include my journey as a teenager to the council chambers in the old courthouse where I had my only encounter with your dad, Mayor J.R. Allen. Believe it or not, at that meeting, it was about a zoning case near my house on St. Mary's Road for a Japanese restaurant to serve alcohol. I also saw for the first time Mr. H.J. McClung, who had later become one of my heroes. By my guess, I have attended approximately 1,700 council meetings, give or take a few. And over that time, I have recommended at least 1,024 zoning applications to this council, again, give or take a few. But 34 years is a long time. My parents, James and Isaleen, instilled in me a civic pride for this community at an early age with a belief that we had it bigger and better in Columbus than anywhere else. I still believe that today. Going off to graduate school and then to jobs with the Alabama Town Biggie Regional Commission in Alabama, and on to, on to the city of Del Rio, Texas, I never thought I would be given the opportunity to come back home again. Dick Ellis, who was at that time the Director of Community Development, gave me that chance. And for that, I am eternally grateful. Thirty-four years though is a long time, folks. And over that time, I have seen a lot of changes. When I got here in 1988, we were dealing with an antiquated development system built upon zoning requirements that did not really reflect the needs of this community. That was eventually changed to what is today, the Unified Development Ordinance, which has strengthened and better protected our community. I have witnessed the rebirth of the Uptown area. I have seen the development and completion of the River Walk. I have seen an implementation of a multi-use trail system such as the Fall Line Trace. I have seen also the importance of protecting our historical treasures. I've seen an emphasis also as well on guarding, on guarding the aesthetics and beauty of this community. We have also seen an investment in our transportation system that has and will provide improvements unparalleled in our history. And above all else, I have seen over the years, all these, all these 34 years, a more transparent government that is not afraid to share its shortcomings as well as its achievements. I've had a front row seat to all of this, and I thank you for this opportunity. But as I've said, 34 years is a long time. They told me in graduate school, if you stayed in the job, planning job particularly, for more than five years, you would probably outlive your usefulness. Well, I have either disproved that theory or reinforced it. Take your pick. During this time, I've had the pleasure to work with some good people. Please don't ask me how many, because I really don't know or remember. But what I do know is that most work folks, most folks that work here come every day with a drive to make Columbus a better place to live. We are extremely fortunate to have team members across the spectrum of this government who want to be here and who want to make a difference. Sure, some come for only the paycheck or to use their position as a stepping stone for something else. The ones I know, the ones I've had the pleasure of working with, are here to serve our citizens. And isn't that the ultimate goal we strive for every day? With that said, one additional thing I want you to know is that the team we have assembled in the Planning Department is a team of dedicated professionals. I want to say it to you one more time. The team we have assembled in the Planning Department is a team of dedicated professionals who are dedicated to these principles of working hard and getting, doing, doing the things for, right for our citizens, a group of people that are unrivaled by anyone. It is a team I am truly proud of. But 34 years is a long time. I never really thought about, about this day, for in all honesty, I truly enjoy what I do, and I really do. And with that said, I have a confession. I would have done this job for free. Again, in all honesty though, there were times I thought I was doing just that. This can be a difficult job if you do not have the support of others. I have been fortunate in that regard. Many of you know something of the struggles my family has endured over the last couple of years. The sudden passing of my wife, Kay, almost two years ago, left a huge hole in my life. She was my rock, my confident, and my best friend, who honestly never appeared to completely be interested in my job. She knew whom I worked for, but beyond that, she didn't care. The only thing that mattered was that I was gainfully employed and that it made her, it made me happy. It was her that had to put up with me going to night meetings that I had to attend, or the trips out of town, or to, or the seemingly important things I thought I had to do, which now don't seem important at all. I miss her dearly. And I just wish she was here so that we could enjoy these retirement years together. After all, she probably earned them more than I. And then recently, my son, J.W., had to be hospitalized for over two months in Atlanta for the seizures that seemed to never stop. During all these times, I was fortunate to be able to work remotely and virtually with the support and understanding of my team, and from the City Manager, and from Deputy City Manager, Hodge, and I thank you both. But again, 34 years is a long time. Because of these recent events and because I'm eligible for retirement, I believe it's time for me to go home. I won't be leaving completely as I have been asked to stay on part-time and complete some tasks. But my son needs me, and I want to spend as much time as I can with him. When I left, when I left to come here tonight, I showed him how to watch this meeting on TV. I have no false hope that he is watching me now, for I know as soon as I left, he switched channels to watch Power Rangers. Being second to Power Rangers is not bad. He makes me laugh, and he reminds me of all the good things that life has to offer. And I look forward to our time. And Jadeve, I promise, I waved to you tonight. Hi Bud. To all of you, I am grateful for your service, your support, and your friendship over the years. Above all, I am grateful to a loving and caring God who has seen me through these years, and I know will see me through many more. I will be around should you need my assistance on matters, so please feel free to give me a call. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of this council, Mr. City Manager, and to our citizens, thank you for this opportunity to serve this great community and my home. Thank you.
Director Jones, there's probably no more fitting week of the year to have to say farewell to you than during Georgia Cities Week, because you are emblematic of what a true public servant should be, putting many, many times your, your work, I know, ahead of where you would rather be, which is with your family. And just on behalf of the citizens of this, this community, I want to tell you how much you, your work is appreciated and how grateful we are for your dedicated service. There are a number of people that wish to say, make some comments. First, Counselor Huff.
Director Jones, with your sense of humor and some of the jokes we've had in the past, those words were very eloquent, and you truly wished to drop the mic and just walk out of the room. That was, that was great. I thank you for the time you spent with me explaining things, the people around you that took on the same approach, to say, here's a new energetic council person, doesn't know what he's doing, but he's eager to learn. We've been through many projects together. It's, it's amazing to me that the day has come. You mentioned it to me two or three years ago, and talked about it, and I'm like, no, you'll be around after I'm gone. So the day has come, but to your credit, you as a father, you as a husband, I got a chance to witness all of that. And the thing that stands out the most now is watching you balance the city along with your son. And you have not left us hanging, you have not left your son hanging. And I know it's been quite a burden to try to do it all. So thank you for being the person that you are. Thank you for getting me through, I think roughly now, I'm a little over 250, approaching $300 million worth of projects. And for a person coming in new, and one year later, a vote on T-S्लास, and now 12 years later, we're up for a second vote on T-S्लास, I understand the importance. I understand what it means to Columbus and to the other 15 cities, counties around. So I'll share time with everybody else, but I thank you. I'll, I'll get with you because we, we still need to get together. We still haven't had lunch lately. So congratulations to you. Best wishes, God's blessings always. You need anything, pick up the phone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Jones, thank you for indulging me because I know sometimes you didn't want to, and I don't blame you. But you taught me a lot, and I really appreciate it. I have learned a tremendous amount about how planning works, how zoning works, and everything else in the city. I told you once, I think you were my go-to guy, because if I ever didn't have any idea who I was supposed to go bother, I'd bother you, and then you'd tell me who I should go talk to. But thank you for 34 years, and I hope you have a great time with J.W.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, I know your first encounter with city government was with my dad, and I know it was a good one for you. It was much better than some of the encounters I had with him, so. Serving on council is, is not easy. Sometimes it can be very difficult, but, but having someone to call on, and I think I can speak for all the council, when you have somebody you can call on, and they answer the phone anytime, and they help walk you through situations, because when you're elected, you don't know it all. The voters think you know it all just because you got elected, so they call you and ask questions, and you say, well, let me look into that, I'll get back to you. So it's great to have, have someone like Rick and, and to call on. And I know we all enjoyed him reminiscing and walking back through, hearing the proclamation that Counselor Thomas read, and then Rick walking through some of the memories you could, you could remember back and think about all the things you were here to, to work with him on. I have encouraged him to, to start writing some now that he's got some free time, because if you've read any of his posts on Facebook, he, he does a very good job. And you just, you think you're right there in the room with him when he's writing. So I, I would, I would really encourage you to do that. All the public meetings we had out in District 6 and many others around town, he was always there. And I, I understand how probably your wife felt, because I know how mine feels too about that. So thank you for showing up and being there to help talk through all those issues with the public and with us. Your, your work over the 34 years, you've left your fingerprints all over Columbus, literally. And it's almost an institution with you being here for that long, and, and your name's on, emblazoned on all of those, those projects. It's, it's great for me to be able to call you my planning director and my coworker, but more importantly, my friend. And thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Woodson?
Thank you. Rick?
Rick, I appreciate it. From day one, when we first met, like Bruce said, he looked at me like, oh, here comes another rookie. But you became my friend, and you became my mentor. You and, and the city manager has helped me understand government from day one, and was able to accomplish a lot of things in District Seven that wouldn't have been accomplished. It's one of the districts that's more progressive. Thanks to you, your staff, and the city, which I'm very proud to represent because of you. You were my backbone. You helped me, you kept me straight, and you answered my call day or night, and I appreciate that. And you coached me through things I should do and don't do, and don't bring up. I can remember that. But most of all, it's not over yet, because even with me retiring, we got South Lumpkin Road. If they think that I'm retiring, it's South Lumpkin Road, I, I don't think so, and I will be dragging you with me, so that we make sure that it is completed, and we can have the streetscape that South Columbus needs and deserves. And I want to also mention here, a lot of individuals don't know, the Martin Luther King Project, why community leaders came together to work on that project. That was a dream of Rick, a silent, secret dream of his to do. I remember when he first mentioned it, you know, to me, and then later it became a reality when community leaders and himself got together, and in behalf of our history of our community, I say thank you. There are a lot of things I've gone here that people don't know, that you have your thumbprint. Somebody else might have mentioned it, but Rick already thought about it, because he was such a great planner, and the love that you have for this city. So, I tell you today, in behalf of District Seven, and my personal self, thank you for all you do, thank you for your friendship, and I love reading your posts. And JR, JW is very lucky to have you as a father.
Thank you.
Because you're an amazing dad. And I'm going to call you, because we got South Lumpkin Road to work on. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Rick, to you, I, as city manager, I simply want to say thank you, your commitment, your dedication, your hard work as a part of our team, and I know, and I speak for Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, and, and for each of these department heads standing here, who've had the opportunity to work with you, and you support them over the years. You've been phenomenal. I agree with everything, absolutely everything that has been said around the table about you, and I commend you, thank you, honor you, and I admire the way you've been there for your family. You've been there for them, and, and we have tried to work with you, as you know, to make sure you're there for them, and, but God bless you, JW, he'll take care of you, and you'll take care of him, and we didn't just let Rick walk out the door. We've got an agreement with him. I met with Rick yesterday, and he went over every project with me yesterday, and I said, Rick, you're not going anywhere, and Pam, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, and I talked to Rick yesterday, and he's got a lot of work that he's going to be doing. We laid out the projects, and, and we are looking to get much, much, much more work out of you. But I commend you, congratulate you, honor you, and thank you. Job well done.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Garrett?
Director Jones, I just want to thank you for your service. I'm the one, the only ones up here who can say that I was three years old when you started working for the city. And I, and I can tell you that when, when I started going with my dad to the Robinson Humphrey office downtown, that was all that was downtown, it was that and crime. And there weren't AMs, there wasn't a Riverwalk, it was a thought in the process, I mean, the eighties, I mean, but we were at a critical point, and so many projects that you did made me decide after law school, there's nowhere else I'm considering a job. And I'm so glad I got to serve on council with you, and I thank you for your service, because over those thirty-four years, we've seen Columbus rise like a meteor, in my opinion, and we have some absolutely amazing things about this city, and you played a part in every single one of them. I appreciate all your service, and God bless your family and, and your son, and I, I really hope that y'all enjoy retirement, and look forward to reading more from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tucker?
Director Jones, I just want to say thank you. Another new kid on the block. When I started, a lot of constituents were asking about opportunity zones, and I asked you to put together some type of, if we can do like a Facebook Live, and you said, hey, whatever, when, let's do it. And you said, you took the time to actually not only educate me, educate constituents of District Four, but all of Columbus, and that's something that we can pull up right now, because it's still on Columbus Plans Facebook site. So, I just thank you for being a wealth of knowledge, and anytime I had any question, day or night, you were there, you truly have blessed me, and I just wish you all the health, wealth, and love and joy in your retirement.
Thank you.
Councilor Davis?
Rick, I just want to say a few words, and I, I guess I could say many, because of the years that we've spent working together, but, you know, you mentioned all those accomplishments that you talked about, all these ordinances, and I just want people to realize, those, those are not easy tasks, and I don't know how you dealt with all those characters, including me, trying to get all these things done. I, I just don't understand that, but you did it, and you served our community well, and I mean, you were right there on the forefront in making this happen, and it happened not just weeks or months, it took years to get these things together, and so many personalities and, and people involved, but the steadfastness, your sturdy, your patience, I think of that, I think the one thing I think about right now is your service, just the accessibility and availability over the years. I mean, the number of meetings that you've had to have throughout the community is ju, I don't know how you do it, I, I really don't, and still, like you said, juggle a lot of the day-to-day and family challenges that, that you deal with, you've done it, and you've done it well. That's amazing, that's amazing in itself. And like Councilor Huff said, the, you know, the, to add to that, the sense of humor, that the, the unique way and how you went about doing all this, where just, it just took the edge, it took the edge off of everything and made controversial issues and, and concerns, it just made it so much more easier, and I can't think of a better person to do that job than you, and you've done it well. You've served our community extremely well, and for that, I'm grateful, and I'm sure that the constituents I represent and the citizens of this, of our community are grateful as well. So, you should be proud, it's a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, I think I was probably thirty when I started working with you, and every year has been a pleasure. I don't think we've had to call you to court to testify very often, because we haven't had a lot of zoning litigation. Again, that's because of leadership in your department and the, your staff, the people under you. We haven't had to litigate things in court, which is a good thing. You're the type of planning director that my old Emory Law Professor Tarver Roundtree hoped would work in every one of Georgia's one-hundred-and-fifty-nine counties, because you seek to find a balance, the right balance, between the rights of a developer and the rights of a surrounding property owners. And that's a hard job to do sometimes, but I appreciate all you have done, it's been a pleasure to work with you. You've called in when you didn't need to, when you were in the hospital with family members, you've still weighed in on some of our cases, and we appreciate all your dedication, it's been a pleasure.
Councilor Barnes?
Mr. City Manager, thank you for what you said. So, he's not leaving anywhere? Can I give you a call about nine o'clock?
I'm sorry, who, who are you talking to again?
See, he, his timing is excellent. I mean, he could, you know, he could do, what is it, comedian, when they say go up there in front, he could, you can't get ahead of me. I want to personally thank you, Rick, for the many times that I've had to sit down, and you had to really educate me, no matter when I called, but you always made the time. And just listening to what Councilor Thomas said, throughout your talk, he said thirty-four years. If you look at all that you accomplished for the city of Columbus and for the citizens of the city, it's just tremendous, but you've always been a very low-key type person, always been extremely patient. With me, I can speak, and I can, I hear from the other counselors how patient that you've been, and what you've done has just been remarkable. It just shows a true dedication to the city of Columbus, and when you said you loved what you're doing, and you would work for free, you could tell it was in your heart to do what you were doing, and I sincerely appreciate you. Now, the other thing, I got a beef with you, okay? I hate to put it public in front of everybody, but I guess I'm going to have to, that's the way I do things. Where's my onions? Where's my onions? I caught him not being ready, I can't believe that!
In fairness, I, I've tried to send out emails to all you fine folks, and all you fine folks that are here tonight, I have onions to sell, and I will be glad to sell you onions from the Greater Kiwanis Club of Columbus, Georgia, along with my friend, John House, because they all go to a great cause in, in serving the children of this community. They're ten dollars for ten, for a ten-pound bag, and twenty, twenty-two dollars for a twenty-five pound bag, and I can't believe on my retirement thing you make me talk like this.
But see, that was, that was my lead-in for you, you didn't, that was my lead-in for you to let everybody know, see.
We, we need to announce that to everybody, let them know, thank you.
But just thank you so much, and God bless you, keep you and JW in my prayers.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Thomas?
Rick, I was delighted when the mayor asked me to read the proclamation tonight. You're a very special person, not only to me, but to people all in this room, all over this town, and we appreciate all that you have done. We know that it has not always been easy, not only have you had to deal with problems, with medical problems with your family, but you've had to deal with us, and that's not always easy to do, but you've always do it with a smile on your face and a lift in your walk, and we are going to miss you, and we're going to miss your advice and consultation. Take care, have fun, and come back to see us whenever you can, and you know, you can sit in the back of the room and do this if you want to, but we, we appreciate all that you have done for us. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Councilor Crabbe?
I'm so glad I get to be the last. I have two words for you, Norris Road. Thank you so much for being the shoulder for me to cry on. And I wanted to let you know that the lady sent me an email this week and said that she loved that I was her counselor, and she asked for a sign in her front yard, and that had a lot to do with you, teaching me how to get through that first zoning that was contentious, and you guided, you guided me, and you directed me, and you taught me how to do my job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think they're all finished. Well, Rick, if there's one thing I know that you've taught every single one of us, is that thirty-four years is a long time. You're good, you, you're great at the job, but you, you are a better husband, and you're a better father. Thank you for that, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have the proclamation, you do get to keep this. Rick, why don't you come up here? We might want to reuse it. Well, to the members of coun, just, just momentarily, he'll still be reachable. The members of council, I'm going to, I'd like to present to you the, our FY twenty-three budget this evening, make just a few comments. I'm going to ask for Angelica Alexander to come to the podium, so that she can give you some details about the budget meetings, and then answer any of the harder questions, and maybe fill in some of the gaps that I leave off, because I'm going to try to be brief. We've had a full evening, and we've got much more business to do. But I'm all, I'm all, I'm not going to read this whole mayor's letter, but I think it's important that we read the first portion of it, just to kind of frame what has been going on in our community. Over the past two years, our community has courageously weathered the negative impacts of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. While we've seen a decline in the number of new COVID cases and positive impacts to this, the city's fiscal condition, we are still faced with some challenges that we have to overcome. As crime and inflation increase across the country, we recognize that Columbus has not been left untouched. That's why, in support of ongoing recovery efforts, we allocated millions of federal relief dollars to provide aid to small businesses and nonprofits, many of which serve our most vulnerable residents. We invested millions of recovery funds and fund balance reserves to ensure that city employees were able to provide pivotal community services, such as road repair, trash pickup, and public safety. We infused millions of dollars in community safeguard programs to help address the increase in crime throughout our city. Because of these investments in our local economy, infrastructure, and workforce, we are better positioned to continue the momentum we started last year. The last two years, if, are indicative of this community's resiliency. We are confident that the future for Columbus is bright and poised for success. Couple of the highlights of the budget that you will be receiving, or you have received. This year's budget has, it shows, reflects an increase of six percent, up from two-hundred-and-ninety-six million, five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars to three-hundred-and-fourteen million, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in revenues and expenses. Almost all of that increase is due to about three different items. One is the pay plan that is currently being compiled by Evergreen. We have set aside ten million dollars, that will be expended this year, because we expect to, we expect to implement that no later than the first of the year. We're hoping to get it a little sooner than that, maybe around the fourth quarter. So, that is ten million dollars of the, of the increase. We still have dramatic challenges with our labor force that, that makes providing some services difficult, so we are putting another four-point-seven-eight million dollars towards a contract to ensure that we continue to be able to pick up our, our waste. We also saw about a two-million-dollar increase in health insurance. We saw fairly flat claims in two thousand and nineteen from the previous year, but as most of you know, all of the counselors know, we're self-funded, so that means when the claims are, are, are paid, we pay them. We write a check on a monthly basis for those claims. So, when the pandemic started to have an impact on those claims, it impacted the cost to provide the services to our community, our citizens. What we have done, however, in the rec, in recognition of some of the challenges that are going on in the world right now, to include inflation, to include rising gas prices, food is costing more, we are not going to pass on that increase to our employees this year. It'll make the seventh straight year that there's been an opportunity, opportunity for our employees to see a zero increase in their, in their insurance benefit, or excuse me, in their insurance premium. There will be a slight increase in the office visits, one of ten dollars, to help offset some of the costs, but, but we will hold the line on, on the cost to our, our employees. We also are going to be able to, in addition to the implementation of the pay plan, we're also able to provide a two percent cost of living increase for our employees. That will also allow a one percent increase to our retirees. The general fund reserve remains very solid. The general fund reserve remains very solid. We anticipate it, uh, uh, ending up at over ninety-six days. So we're just under a hundred days. We're over our internally set ninety-day. And, and the thing that is significant about that is that there's over sixty days of reserve, which is recommended by the Georgia Government Finance Office Association, just in general fund. So it doesn't even include, uh, that sixty-plus days doesn't even include the OLOS. It's the OLOS that takes us up to the ninety-seven. The OLOS revenue budget is projected to be forty million. Seventy percent of that, uh, as, as committed in the past, is going to go towards public safety and thirty percent towards, uh, towards our, uh, infrastructure. So there are a number of other things that we look forward to, uh, to going over with this council in the budget session under Budget Chair Judy Thomas's, uh, guidance. Uh, and I will turn it over to Angelica Alexander, our finance director, and let her talk about the, uh, calendar and any other items that we may have missed that maybe we need to point out.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, uh, council, Mr. City Manager. Um, the mayor so eloquently, uh, really sort of summarized some of the highlights of the budget. There is a, um, a flyer that I was in the process of printing when I was being called back out to the front that I'm gonna, I will pass out that'll lay out some of, some of those same highlights that the mayor, uh, mentioned. I'll pass that to you before you leave tonight. But in terms of the, uh, dates and the schedule for the, um, FY twenty-three budget process, um, our first, uh, council budget review session, uh, with the budget committee will be May third. Um, that meeting is scheduled for twelve P., uh, twelve, uh, twelve P.M. to three P.M. on May third. Um, that meeting, um, is really sort of set aside, uh, for me to give the complete, uh, comprehensive overview of the budget that includes, you know, all the individual funds. Our health, um, uh, benefits consultant, uh, NFP, will be on-site, um, to also present, um, some more information, um, as it relates to the healthcare costs and some of the trends that, uh, we've seen over these last, uh, two years or so. Um, the next, uh, scheduled meeting, as far as budget review, will be May tenth. Um, that would be twelve P.M. to three P.M. as well. Um, and if, um, I'll send out a, a calendar invite to all the department heads and elected officials. Um, once they receive their, uh, budgetary, um, summaries this evening, uh, they may want to still come and speak, um, before the council. You know, obviously there were many requests and some obviously had to go, um, were left unfunded. So if they are, any department directors or elected officials that would like to come before the council, they could do that on May tenth, as, uh, as well as May seventeenth. Um, that, um, session is scheduled to begin at nine A.M. Uh, that is the date that will, um, have the add-delete list, um, that, uh, if there are any items that are added to the mayor's proposed budget by the budget review committee. Um, May seventeenth is the date that you all will vote on, on those items. And it, like, again, is scheduled, uh, for nine A.M., um, to three P.M., um, just depending on the length of time, as far as the add-delete list and if there are any department presentations to be made that day. So, uh, those are the sort of upcoming meetings in May. Um, obviously, um, we'll advertise the budget once it's officially, um, once the add-delete list is, uh, decided on. That'll be May thirty-first. Um, June seventh is when we'll have our first taxpayer bill of rights hearing, um, in this very room, uh, nine A.M., June seventh. Uh, we'll also have the second taxpayer bill of rights hearing at six P.M., um, June seventh. Um, and the third taxpayer bill of right, uh, hearing will be, uh, June fourteenth. And those, uh, taxpayer real, bill of right hearings are, um, really only necessary if there is a, um, projected increase in the, uh, rollback mileage. So, um, that is really all that I had to share tonight, Mr. City Manager, unless there was something else that you'd like for me to speak on. The, the thirty-first, uh, we're just advertising the budget that day. That, uh, is a regularly scheduled council meeting day. I believe council counts at the twenty-fourth, and you'll meet at, uh, nine A.M. on the thirty-first? Is that right?
All right. Any more questions of the finance director? Thank you. All right. Next, we've been asked to pull up item number one from the city manager's agenda, uh, the South Columbus River District TAD allocation district fund grant. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, um, item on my agenda was on my agenda at the last meeting, and we had an inconclusive, uh, vote. And so I am bringing it back on the agenda, uh, tonight. And let me just say, I, I could not help but, um, hear the Director of Community Reinvestment, Rob Scott, as he stood at the podium talking about Georgia Cities Week and, uh, what he is going to be doing. And I heard the word affordable housing come out of his mouth at least ten times. Affordable housing. In fact, I heard these words from his mouth at that podium tonight. He says, "We are in an affordable housing crisis." That's what I heard him say at the podium tonight. "We're in an affordable housing crisis." And so the project, uh, that's on my agenda, South Columbus River District Tax Allocation District Fund Grant, Neighbor Works as Developer, is an opportunity to, um, deal with the affordable housing crisis that Rob Scott, our community reinvestment director, spoke of. Uh, so, um, I'm asking, uh, the council tonight to authorize me to enter into an agreement.
Motion to second to approve.
Mayor, we've got, I think one counselor wants to offer an amendment, a one-sentence amendment, before we take a vote.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Huff?
No, Counselor Davis.
Okay, I'm sorry. He was next. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. To the motion. Um, first of all, let me just say, uh, Mr. City Manager, thank you for, um, working your schedule so we could get together and I can meet with you and staff and, and go over some matters that, uh, that I've talked about and finalizing and understanding this project a little bit more complete. I know that I was heading out of town, which was, uh, probably difficult for everybody, but we had an opportunity to talk. And one of the things that I talked about that I'd like to see was, in addition to the agreement, um, was to add in the, uh, request of the developer to, uh, whenever they have their audited financial statements every year, which is required by law for nonprofit, that the, uh, the developer will submit the, uh, audited financial report within thirty days after, uh, they receive it from their auditors and, uh, that it will be given to the finance director and just held on file annually until the, uh, agreement has been satisfied. So that's one of the things we talked about. I think everybody was okay with that. Uh, that's one of the things, uh, I would like to see in the agreement. Uh, I think the city attorney said that it would be ideal in section five-five, so I am putting that out there as, uh, as a motion to, uh, to amend that and to, to approve it.
All right. There's a motion, uh, for the amendment from Counselor Davis, second from, uh, Counselor, uh, Counselor Gary.
And, and, and let me just say that, uh, in, in... Look, I think it's clear that, that there's a lot of things that, uh, that I really like about this project, a lot of things. I, I really believe in what the church is doing, the ministry, and what they're trying to do with outreach and people, and I am a hundred percent, a hundred percent for that. I think there's some things about it that necessarily, uh, I may not like, but at this point, does it, does it really matter? I think one of the concerns that, uh, that really stands out is not standing in the way of something that's going to change, uh, the lives, hopefully, of many people and, and, um, and changing an area of our community that, uh, that, that needs some reinvestment, regardless of the structure of, of deal-making or deals in general. I think it is where it is, and, uh, I think it's a little bit too late to work on that. I would like to say, though, in preface, to where I am tonight, in the future, I really would like us to, uh, look at some of these things we do in these areas, if we're going to continue down this path, that we look a little bit, uh, different in, in how we do, uh, our business, mainly in communicating and getting, uh, appropriate documents in a timely manner. But, uh, regardless, uh, I just wanted to say that for the record. And what was even more interesting, and I don't really know how to take it, but nobody really knows this, but maybe two people on council, including the mayor, I think, but, uh, on the drive to do some of my business, uh, out of state, um, my wife and I talked about this. We talked about our meeting, just talked about the whole, you know, this, this whole thing that's been put in front of us. And, uh, we went out to dinner that night. We went out to dinner and we sat there and, uh, we were at the table and, uh, had some conversations. And I think I went to the restroom. My wife kind of apologized to the people next to us, to my back, and, and, uh, and told them that, uh, hope we weren't too loud and disrupted your dinner. I hope you had a good dinner. And they said, "No, no, no." And, uh, at the same time, they, uh, they asked my wife if we were from Columbus. And I'm like, "Yeah, we're from Columbus." And she said, "Well, that's interesting. So are we." And I used to be, I used to be there. I grew up there. And, uh, matter of fact, I was just there not long ago. And, uh, we, the conversation proceeded, but I asked her, "What was she doing?" And she said, "Well, I was taking care of some family matters, some trusts and things like that, and, and, uh, we just took care of that." I said, "What, you know, what part of town?" She said, "Well, my family just donated a bunch of land to, uh, to a ministry." And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And I said, uh, uh, I said, "Well, who'd you donate it to?" She said, "Well, I donated at First Baptist Church." And, uh, I said, "Do you know a pastor named Jimmy Elder?" And she said, "I know Jimmy Elder. I know him well. We've been working on this for a long time. I know Hal Abrit. I know all these people." And anyway, the conversation went on and on, and it just blew me away. It really blew me away. And I don't know why that happened, but that was a long day. And there were so many things, and it was pretty much ninety-eight percent of the day was the focus on what is being put before us tonight. So I wanted to share that. Um, that just doesn't happen in life many times, so for whatever it's worth, um, that's it. Sure.
All right. Counselor, uh, we do have a motion, a second. Counselor Huff, is this to the motion?
Yes, to the whole deal.
Mine's to the motion.
Okay. Uh, Ca-, Counselor Tucker, is yours to the motion? All right. Counselor Thomas.
Um, I do want to be clear. Um, the audit that, um, Counselor Davis is talking about is the regular audit that is done of the, um, uh, nonprofit organization. It's not a special audit, but it's that, that regular one. And it would be presented to us or given to us in thirty days after receipt. So that should give the, um, the, you know, Neighbor Works time to present it to their board before they present it to council. But I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're talking about.
Uh, that's what, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
That's what the counselor is talking about, but I wanted to be clear that, um, they would submit their audit to us in the same way that other organizations submit audits to us, and those audits are not forwarded to city council. And so if it's the CVB, if it's the, um, uh, sports council, nonprofits, all of them submit their annual audits to the finance director.
To the city, but not necessarily to council.
But not to council. And I just wanted to be clear about that.
I, I just wanted too to make clear that this is, we're not, uh, Counselor Davis, I did not think was asking for-
Sure.
-a special audit, but the regular, uh, business audit that, that is done by the, um, nonprofit. Thank you.
All right. Um, okay. Counselor Davis, I assume this is to the motion?
Right, this is motion.
Okay.
Right. And, and as I said, it, it's just submitted to the finance director and they'll keep it on file. That's all.
Sure.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment, um, if, if that's all right. We've got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That, it has been amended. Now, uh, Counselor Huff, to the, uh, overall issue.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Uh, I thank the city attorney and the city manager for giving me time to get questions answered. That's all I was asking for two weeks ago. So in my meeting with the city attorney, uh, we went back over all of the, uh, legalities of a TAD and the fine, fine language that's in there. So there's still an issue of two governing bodies, but according to one part of the piece that he will read into the record tonight, to make sure that we're legally clear. Uh, but before we get to that point, I want to make something really, really clear, uh, because we have media here. And two weeks ago, the media kind of came after us as if we were against affordable housing. And we, the council, no one up here has ever been against affordable housing. You can't get enough affordable housing, as was mentioned tonight. But the methods and the steps that we take to get there, that's what this was about. It was about getting there and understanding that we have, uh, two governing bodies in the city. We have two pots of money in the city. We have two police forces in the city, and they don't tell us what to do and we don't tell them what to do. So in that case, they have a splosh. We have splosh. We have splosh. We're both in the taxing business. So based on that, the fine print said that, the city attorney was showing me that, the fine print states that the governing body, the municipality that's over the municipality, is in charge of the TADs. So what I've asked the city attorney to do tonight, to go on record with me, to say that this is legal, and he is going to read it into the record coming from the city attorney to the minutes. So if anything ever comes up, it's in the record. And the other part was, like Counselor Davis stated, please, 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 to the public, going forward, get the council and city manager, everybody, as much information as you can. We'd appreciate it. Uh, believe it or not, we are all up here, a little nerdy in our own way, and we do read the information, even though people think we don't. We do read, we do talk to each other, we do share information. So if this gets to us early, we can avoid times like this and we can move a little faster. But I'd like to yield to the city attorney to read it into the record, uh, the piece that I asked him to put into the record.
Okay. If that's all right, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll run through it again. It's, um, really just a couple of pertinent pieces of the statute, one having to do with the definition of political subdivision. The, uh, TAD law, which runs about twenty pages in the Georgia code, they define political subdivision as a county, municipality, or consolidated government of the state. They expressly excluded language, uh, such as county and independent board of education from that definition. And they use the words county and independent board of education in the definition of abhorrent property tax. So if they had wanted to use it and meant to use it as a political subdivision, they would have inserted it. And, you know, the, leaving it out of there means that political subdivision is only a county, municipality, or consolidated government like Columbus. And of course, we're all familiar, after a year of looking at these things, that the general prohibition is that no elected official of a political subdivision or a board commission or redevelopment agency thereof shall voluntarily acquire any interest, direct or indirect, in any property included or planned to be included in a redevelopment area, that is, in a TAD. So, uh, it's our opinion and remains our opinion for the past year that this law does not apply to the independent school board members or county- or county school board members. And therefore, there's not a prohibition or a conflict with an elected school board member being involved in the development of this particular TAD project. That's just our interpretation, looking at the statutes, using rules of statutory construction. We got an opinion from, an unofficial opinion from the Georgia Attorney General that agreed with that particular assessment. The Assistant Attorney General did go on hypothetically and talk about, well, if the school board member was an elected official, for purposes of this law, I would need more information about what she does for the nonprofit, et cetera. But we don't reach that tonight. We don't reach that part of the opinion. We don't reach that legal issue, because the only important issue for this body that approves the TAD is whether the school board member is included in political subdivision language that cannot acquire property in a TAD. And for good measure, we went on and got one more legal opinion from Troutman Sanders, now Troutman Pepper Law Firm, from a lawyer who has been involved in drafting sales tax statutes, development authority statutes, SPOSS statutes across the state, and in the General Assembly. And it's his opinion that this TAD conflict law does not apply to school board members also. But we went that extra measure and got that opinion, just to try to bring a comfort level to everybody around the table. But it's our opinion that you can be confident that this particular project and the school board member involved in the nonprofit in this case, that does not violate the Georgia TAD conflict rule. And so with that, you can move on and take your vote or have more discussion.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Tucker?
Yes, I would ask, because this has, has really been a hard situation for me and some of the other councillors. And I did mention to you, Attorney Fay, that I spoke with ACCG in reference to the conflict. And they said that the school board member was, in fact, an elected official based on this Georgia law 36-44-21, when it talks about no elected or appointed official. So what I would like to see is maybe we can get Georgia law amended or make it clear, because we had another school board member, I don't know if it was 2016, but had to recuse themselves. And not only did they recuse themselves, they no longer ran for reelection because of this same situation with the TAD. So instead of putting me and my integrity or other people that might feel like this is, you know, not a lawful transaction, help us, you know, bring it up to put it on our legislative agenda, because this, this has not, this is not the first time it's occurred, and it probably won't be the last. So we can actually add it to our agenda in some form, yeah, coming up in the 2023.
Yeah. And that's been on the list. We can certainly put it on the list again. We have asked the General Assembly on a couple of occasions to change this law, because it is so harsh for local elected officials and appointed officials, to broaden it and make it a disclosure law, so that if you, as an elected member of this body, or a school board, or any other body, wanted to acquire property in a TAD, you simply would need to disclose it on the record, and then not participate in any of the discussion or votes. So we've asked them to make it a disclosure law. And so far, they have not taken us up on that request to amend it. But we can certainly put, cite them back on the list to do that, or make it even clearer with school board members, or any other things that might be pertinent. So, you know, that can certainly be done again, put it on the legislative agenda list in the fall.
Well, I'm on both policy committees for ACCG and GMA, and also NACO. I am willing to push this as hard as I can, because we should not feel guilty for voting no, because the law says something that's prohibited, you know? And you shouldn't be made to feel bad. I, I should not feel bad for not supporting something only because of the law, not the project itself, because it's a great project. And I hope that we're able to truly house some of these low-income individuals. I, I really do. And I remember back in 2019, I was attending one of school board members, Kathy Williams, event at CSU, talking about affordable housing. It was exactly 2019, April 20, I mean, 22nd or something like that. It came up in my memories. 2019, I'm sitting at CSU, having this same conversation. I work with homeless veterans, having this same conversation. That's the reason why I have a psychology degree. That's the reason why I do this. But I want to support something that I feel is illegal. And it, and it's hard right now, based on what this law states. And basically, what, what we're doing is really hard. So I, I hope that you can put something together, like ASAP, because we will...
We, we can send something to the legislature in the fall, when we normally do. I can tell you tonight, if you want to vote for the project, you can be confident that it's legal. It does not violate the TAD conflict rule. You don't have to worry about that. But if you're uncomfortable with it, of course, you got to vote your conscience.
Right. So and the reason why I was saying that, because we will, myself and councillor Huff, will be at ACCG come tomorrow. And we have these side policy meetings. And actually, councillor Huff is our, our delegate. So he goes and votes for all the legislation that we have. So if we could take something down to ACCG, that way we can at least start pushing it. And it can be on the ACCG agenda as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, there are no more comments that are queued up. So if you would, councillors, register your votes. Bruce, if you'd put it up there?
Is there a motion on the table?
Yes. Yeah, there was a motion and a second. Motion.
The motion that, that councillor Davis made was...
No, there was a motion that preceded that. There was a motion to approve, and then a, and a second.
Yeah, there was earlier.
Okay. All right, and that motion passes. There is a...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Let me, first of all, thank council members for that vote. And thank you, city attorney, for your hard work and getting all of the legal opinions to make me comfortable bringing it and asking council to vote for it as city manager. And certainly, you know, I've talked to enough people. I serve on the GMA Transportation Policy Committee. And so we prevail all of the legislation for GMA on the transportation policy, excuse me, on the Legislative Policy Committee. And I chair the Transportation Policy Council for Georgia Municipal Association. And I'm very comfortable with the opinion, and that's why I was willing to bring it. But I did want to acknowledge, councillor Davis, you mentioned Jimmy Elder and First Baptist Church, and the person you met. And Jimmy Elder is here. And, and I'd really, if you don't mind, invite you to come to the podium, Mr. Elder. And, and just really want to thank you and First Baptist Church, your church, for what you do for this community.
Thank you.
I mean, I've watched you with the Mercer Medical School. I've watched you with your property as, this property, as councillor Glenn Davis mentioned. And I think what you, your leadership, your church, has done, continuing to do for this community, deserves recognition. And so I do want to thank you for your interest in affordable housing and what you do for the community. I did get a text from you, and, and I had a brief conversation with you. And I'd like for you to just have a word with us, if you will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, those who voted with us on this. This is very important. You know, we've talked about values, moral values, ethical values. There's nothing more immoral in a community than to have people living in some of the squalor they're living in, and having an opportunity to put 229 housing units in place, and be able to give them the opportunity to live there. It's an ethical issue. It's also a crime issue, because when you have affordable housing, it is a, an important tool for our sheriff, our police chief, for all of our law enforcement, to be able to help stem the tide of crime in the community, too. And the other thing is, you know, when we started this project down there, it came from Hal Avery. And we've, we've had a mission down there for 50, 50-plus years. And in that mission, we have taught English as a second language. We fed people. We've helped with medical care. We gave COVID vaccines. We did COVID testing. We preach gospel. We do all the things that you do in a mission like that. And we've just had a benefactor that has, has gifted us with an incredible new building down there, a renovated building, that's beautiful, because of his commitment to that. But what Hal Avery used to say, he said, you know, we can do everything we want to, as long as they're in our building. But when you send them home to the places that they have to go, places that you wouldn't sell, places that you would not live in, places that you would not tolerate in your own community, he said, that's just wrong. And that's why Hal put his heart and soul till the day he died, working towards securing the property and helping this to happen. And if you go down there and see one of those little kids, and see when they're there, the joy they have, and when they go home, see what they're living in, then you'll understand, those of you who voted for this, that 229 units are going to house these children. What you've done is, you've made it so that when they go home tonight, you can't change it overnight, for sure. But when they go home tonight, they can dream about living in a place that you and I would be willing to live in, would love, and would feel safe and comfortable in. I want to tell you, I appreciate my council. And I appreciate the fact that you ask questions. I appreciate the fact that you reasoned it through. I appreciate the fact that you research it as it needs to be. And I'm grateful for your vote tonight. May God bless you. We are pleased with this outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Elder. Councillor Woodson?
Yes, Pastor, I just wanted to say, it's in my district, and we do need affordable housing. So in behalf of the district of, the people of District Seven, I say thank you for your church, for your dedication, and the many years you have been there and assisted that community. You've never turned your back from day one, and I appreciate it. And I just want to say to my colleagues that voted against it, it's okay. We have to vote the way we feel in our heart, because you have to look at yourself in the mirror and be okay. But please take in consideration in the future that sometimes we can't change the laws overnight. And we have to choose between people's lives and the law. And if we have someone that says over and over, and we have so many attorneys saying, yes, if we were to get sued, they're it, because it was their opinion, and we went by their opinion. But I don't want anybody to leave here, because I'm a child of God, and I believe what I do, I do for Him. I don't want anybody to leave here feeling bad, because the way they voted, because you voted with your heart and your conscience told you. But the blessing is that God touched Glenn. He was out of town. That was a miracle from God, talking to Glenn, that the people sitting right next to him or behind him donated the property. Tell me if that's not a miracle. That should be your preaching on Sunday.
Hey, my boss is far better at this than I am, for sure.
And, and, you know, and councillor Huff, he really took the time. I was nervous about him now. That's my buddy, but I was nervous. But he did take the time, you know, to reach out and research and feel comfortable enough to vote today. We need more. And I'm pleading out to, to our community, you have land. Don't be afraid of someone that looks different. We need housing. We want to stop crime. We need housing, and we need jobs. And from behalf again, as District Seven and myself, thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I can't wait to see Elliot's way.
It's going to be beautiful.
I know it is.
And thank Neighborhood Works, because if it were not for Neighborhood Works, nothing would come out of the ground. We had the ground, they have what comes out of the ground. And I'm very grateful for Kathy.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
And thank you to Neighborhood Works. I told you, Kathy, that's all I'm going to say.
All right. We'll move back to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We'll run on through our business agenda. We do have four zoning hearings to call up. The first one is property at 4322 Rosemont Drive, going from single-family three to single-family four, recommended for approval. I see Mr. Wright Wade in the audience. Are there any questions around the table?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Mr. Wade, just stand by. Let's see, does anybody in the audience want to comment on this petition? I don't see any hands, Mayor.
Okay.
We'll bring that back at the next regular council meeting for a vote. Ms. Clark, what date will that be? May 10th?
10th.
Be May 10th. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Next item is a zoning hearing at 1311 Warner Springs Road, going from mill restoration overlay, general commercial, to just general commercial. Recommended for approval also by Planning Department and Planning Advisory. Sid Lit Investments, Price Walker, J E L, Jordan Mills, are they here? All right. Let's see if any questions around the table. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this, for or against? Okay. Don't see any hands. We'll bring that back on May 10th for a vote. Thank you for being here. Next item is property at 2016 Comer Avenue. Lucy Jones, Frank Lumpkin, owner and applicant, going from neighborhood commercial to residential office, recommended for approval. Is, okay, got somebody here from, are you with Woodruff or?
Yes.
All right. Woodruff Company is here. Any questions around the table? Anybody in the audience want to speak, for or against? Okay, we'll bring this back on May 10th for a vote. Thank you, sir. Last zoning hearing is property at 1118 10th Avenue. They want to go from light manufacturing to general commercial. Recommended for approval. This is for Deals and Steels Outlet. And anybody here with that organization? Okay. Got Mr. Gibson here, lawyer from Page Scranton. Any questions around the table? All right, anybody in the audience want to be heard on Deals and Steals? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibson. We'll bring it back, May 10th for a vote. Then we do have a housekeeping item, Mayor. This is an ordinance to revise section 2-121 of the code, where the Ironworks Convention and Trade Center Authority could dispose of surplus property obtained in the course of its operations. And Ms. Hillary is back there, the director of the Trade Center. Let's see if there are any questions around the table. Mr. City Manager, y'all were in finance, was all okay with this proposal, as far as I know? All right.
Oh, we do have one. I'm sorry. Oh, we do have one, I'm sorry. Counselor Crabbe.
The way you read it, you said surplus property, but it says surplus personal property. So is this like clothing and different things that have been left behind?
Or equipment, or a lot of things. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's more, I'll give you an example. So we have a purchase of blue chairs that were purchased in 1979. We cannot use those for our customers, our clients, they're just not up to standard. So instead of having all of them in an area that's taking up storage, I would like the option on certain situations that would be presented to my authority, it wouldn't give me first right, with communication still with the city manager, the ability to sell those items if needed. If we send directly to city option, I can't get much revenue back from them if we have the option to sell on our own.
It's just personal and movable, personal property or movable equipment is the way we've got it worded. Any other questions?
No, sir.
All right. We'll vote on that, May 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillary. The last item, Mayor, is an add-on, just one quick resolution to settle the claims of William Davenport for $30,000. It was discussed previously.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, Second from Council Carrot. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's approved.
All right. That takes care of our business items. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And I think we had a couple of people on the public agenda, but I think they've both canceled. So we'll move into the city manager's agenda. Ms. Uglie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is a memorandum of understanding Columbus Phoenix City Transportation Study and CCG, and you know, we've, the Columbus Phoenix City.
Motion approved from Counselor Huff, Second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All right, Bruce, please cue it. Counselors, register your votes, please. All right, that's approved.
The next item I have is a fire EMS item, fiscal year '22, other local option sales tax reallocation of $34,000 so they could get those jet skis.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, a Second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it, and Counselors, register your vote. That's approved.
Got lease purchase of golf carts for...
I'd like to accept a motion to approve item four.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to approve items four and five, Second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion on that? Can we cue that, Bruce?
No.
Nope. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. If you would, just...
And the first one had to do with golf carts, and then the second one has to do with John Deere tractors from Deere crediting.
Okay.
That was four and five, right? Yes. And then number six is 2022 National Science Foundations.
Motion approved from Counselor Huff, Second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? All right, Bruce, if you'll cue it. Counselors, please enter your vote.
And that's just a grant opportunity for IT, Mr. Mayor, $50,000.
We need another vote. There we go, it's approved.
A grant opportunity for $50,000 initially, and then four awards in the amount of $1 million, and we're going after those, and we'll see if we are able or if we're successful. Number seven is substance abuse and mental health services.
All right, I didn't catch you made that motion Second, but there were plenty of them, so we'll just go with that. Are there any discussions? Hearing none, please cue it. Counselors, enter your votes, please.
And this is a grant opportunity with no match required, and it's $2 million, up to $2 million, from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. I've got one purchase on...
Motion from Counselor Huff, Second from Counselor Woodson to approve the purchase. Any discussion? Hearing none, Bruce, please cue it. Counselors, register your vote.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is a removal recycling or disposal of mattresses and box springs from the Pine Grove landfill. And then you don't need to approve this emergency purchase, but I wanted to highlight it because you just approved the jet skis and, you know, they found two somewhere and we needed them, and we purchased them, Mayor, and you were telling me, Mayor, that they were used this weekend, last weekend?
I think they were used this afternoon as well. It could have been. They pulled two more off, or at least one individual off the rocks today.
Yeah. And so those jet skis were needed. Fire and mess have already used them twice to rescue some people and save them out of the river. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right.
I'm sorry, I've got some updates.
Okay. I thought we were going to get out of here pretty quick.
I wish. I wish. I got a number of updates, so let me just, you've already heard the Georgia Cities Week. Nancy Bourne is here, election and registration. You heard from her last meeting, and we're going to hear from her again because we're getting, come on up, we're getting into the election period, and we need to hear from her.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Going to try not to repeat myself completely, but a lot of the information will be the same. Excuse me, please, I'm having a cold a little bit. What you're going to see on the ballot, federal offices, state offices, state senator, state representatives, and of course, on the nonpartisan portion, you're going to see judges, mayor, and council, as well as the special election for the T-Sploß. I told you before that we have over 300 ballot styles, so I selected mine that I would see if I selected a mail-out ballot. See a Democratic ballot, all the Democratic candidates on the front, the questions, Republican ballot, all the Republican candidates and the Republican questions. Remember, the questions are non-binding opinion polls, so they don't have any result, it just kind of goes back to the party. And then this is what my nonpartisan ballot would look like if I select a nonpartisan ballot. Remember that that nonpartisan ballot will not have governor, lieutenant governor, state senator, if you want to vote for those offices. You will need to pick either a Democratic or Republican ballot. You'll have the nonpartisan ballot on the bottom. The T-Sploß question will be the absolute last thing on the ballot. You see the special election, it's got a little bit of wording, and that is your T-Sploß election. So what are we going to see? As you know, we've done redistricting. You're going to see different numbers for your House districts, possibly. You may or may not see a council, district council seat, you may or may not see a school board seat, or you might see both council and both school board based on where you live. As you know, council districts were not updated before the May 24th election, and they won't be because of our charter until August. So this election will be in the May 24th, thank you, will be using the old district lines. I will also, as I said before, we'll have the nonbinding questions for the both Republican and Democratic Party, and you will have to select a ballot. We did not change any voting precincts for this election year. We thought it was going to be confusing enough for voters, as it is with the new districts, so we kept all of the old voting locations. You will be receiving a new precinct card, though, that will have your new districts on that precinct card. If you want to go ahead and look, you can look at Georgia's My Voter page, that's mvp.sos.ga.gov, and that will give you a sample of your Republican, Democratic, and your nonpartisan ballot. Early voting begins May 2nd. It's May 2nd through May 20th. We will be open every day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., all days, even on the weekends, in three locations. The first location is at Columbus Technical College in Patrick Hall. The second location is here at the City Services Center in the Community Room, and the third location is the Shirley Winston Recreation Center. And again, all three of those sites will be open every day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., including weekends. One change for voting here at the City Services Center, rather than entering the side entrance where voters have normally entered for the last two years, we're going to be using the covered area where the tax commissioner folks entered because there's not a tax commissioner line anymore. So our voters will have the coverage from the sun, from the heat, and they'll be able to line up, we hope there's not a line, but they would be able to line up in that covered walkway and in the parking garage. If you want to vote absentee by mail, go ahead and request that now. We put about 1,500 ballots in the mail yesterday. It was everything that we had on hand for people who had already requested absentee ballots. Remember, if you are 65 years of age or older, or you are disabled, you can request a ballot one time in a calendar year, and you receive it for the remainder of that calendar year. But it's only for that year. So don't sit back and think, well, I requested it two years ago, they're going to automatically send it to me because we can't. You need to request it at the beginning of every year, and just remember, March of every year to request that absentee ballot. The last day, this was shortened by Senate Bill 202, the last day to request an absentee ballot by mail for this election is May 13th. If you miss that deadline to request that absentee ballot by mail, you will have to vote during the last week of early voting or at your assigned precinct on Election Day. I went ahead and put the date in there for November, and that would be October the 28th. If you want to request an absentee ballot and you need a form, you can go to SecureMyAbsentEeBallot at sos.ga.gov. You can add your driver's license number or your Georgia ID number, but you will have to print it off, and you will have to sign it. All right. As I said before, the applications have to be received 11 days before every election, May the 13th. You can return your application either by mail, email, you can fax, or bring it to us in person. The last time to return an absentee ballot is Election Day at 7:00 p.m. So we have tighter deadlines. The last day to register to vote was yesterday, so if you are not registered, or if you needed to change your name or your address, that deadline was yesterday, you will be able to continue registering, though, if we have a runoff in June. And the absentee window is greatly shortened to 29 days. What do you have to have to apply for your absentee ballot? You have to have a Georgia driver's license or identification card. If you don't have either one of those, you can make a copy of an approved ID, those are things like a passport, anything that says your name and your address that is official mail, and you can attach that to your application. How do you return it? You can mail it to us, takes one stamp, 1.58 cent forever stamp. You can deliver it in person to the elections office, or you can drop it off at the ballot collection drop box. You can also track your absentee ballot at mvp.sos.ga.gov. That's a great website, if you want to go to it just to look, you can get your absentee ballot application, you can see your precinct location, and pretty much any information you would need as a voter. We have one ballot collection drop box this time, that's going to be located here at the City Services Center, just inside the entrance from the parking garage. It will only be open during the hours of early voting. So it opens May 2nd at 7:00 a.m. It closes May 20th at 7:00 p.m. If you miss that window, you will have to deliver your ballot either in person or by mail. Any questions?
Yes, there is one from Counselor Huff.
Director Board, we've got a question about maps. Since the city council districts didn't change, if a voter wants to know what city council district they're in, they can still just go to the city council website, just like they have been, and see that map because it's the same one it has been. Is there a place they can go and see a map of the school districts?
I would have to defer to the Deputy City Manager on that because that would be, I believe, our GIS department that would upload that, but a great resource is My Voter page. It's not going to have a map, but it will tell them what school districts they are in.
All right, thanks.
I think that's it. Great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, next, I've got CDBG Home Action Plan Amendment 2015 through 2021 Update, Rob Scott, Community Reinvestment Director.
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors, Mr. City Manager. Rob Scott, Director of Community Reinvestment. Tonight, we're going to talk to you about HUD program years 2015 to 2021, substantial amendment to annual action plans. As you know, the City of Columbus receives funds annually from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, specifically for Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program. CDBG is a principal federal program, providing localities with grants to improve the physical, economic, and social conditions in their communities. To access these funds, we, every five years, we create a consolidated plan which identifies the needs, the strategies, and the goals that we set forth as a department and as a city. To accomplish the things that we identify in our consolidated plan, annually, we complete an annual action plan, which specifically outlines projects that we anticipate funding. So over the past two years, there have been two major factors that impact CDBG timeliness, and so I'm going to talk about those in just a second, but first, let me just talk about what timely performance is. So timeliness is a check that HUD has for grantees. And what the timeliness test says is that entitlement cities such as ours cannot have more than 1.5 times of our annual allocation in our reserve fundings. And this check happens 60 days prior to the end of the program year. Some of the things that can have a significant impact on timeliness are supply chain disruption as well as staffing. So in terms of the supply chain disruption, supplier inventory shortages and contractor availability, those are things that can slow down projects. In terms of staffing, we all know that we're in the middle of the Great Resignation, and so that has left industry with a technical capacity deficit that many of us internally and externally are working hard to overcome. So when you're dealing with CDBG, one of the most important things to make sure that you're to be timely is that you plan wisely. It is actually one of the biggest factors in terms of being timely. While need is important, readiness of the selected projects to proceed in their fiscal capacity to implement the projects is critical and should be taken into consideration when we award our CDBG funds. Equally important are tools that my department has developed, such as expenditure schedules. We have developed processes to review with our subrecipients, to work through hurdles that impede programmatic implementations. In addition, we have been identifying partners who may be at the risk of low performance and providing the technical assistance necessary to move them forward. I don't know what happened. Okay, give me just a second. Okay. Forward. Okay. So when projects stall, HUD provides a mechanism for communities to align its entitlement funds to what we consider shovel-ready projects. To accomplish this, HUD allows communities to submit substantial amendments to their annual action plans, which would allow for their change in use of funding from one eligible activity to another. This is what we practitioners in the world of HUD entitlement funds call reprogramming. The Community Reinvestment Department is in the process of reviewing open CDBG entitlement funds awarded between 2015 and 2021. After the review is complete, which we expect to be completed in the next day or so, we will be coming back to you with potential reprogramming recommendations to better manage our entitlement funds, which could potentially open the door for increased annual allocations of our entitlement funds. So I just wanted to take a few seconds today to talk to you about reprogramming, what it is, and how... it is, and how you are going to be involved in the process. And when we have our meeting, I believe it's going to be May thirty-first, in which we're going to come back to you after we finish our review, to recommend projects to you to reallocate this funding to, so that way we can be better timely as we move forward.
Counselor Tucker?
Are there any questions?
Yep, Counselor Tucker.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for this Affordable Housing One-on-One. The basics, I did read through it, and I appreciate how you break down the AMI. And I know we're talking about this, but while you're here and I have this in my hand, I have to thank you for that. And also, and y'all forgive me because I'm new and I'm always talking to other elected officials in these meetings that I attend. So in Gwinnett County, they're actually launching a nine-month study to inventory and analyze housing countywide. And after everything that just took place over the course of a few months, we know that we have, we are in a housing crisis. But from reading this and looking at what the AMI speaks about and what affordable housing truly is, and when you say low income and we're addressing low income, I want to ensure when you are retooling or redoing the programs that we address getting units for these ones that, for low-income households, for a family of four, it says fifty-four thousand. And I'm, I think that some of those houses that will be built, I think they are roughly like two-hundred thousand. That's how much the homes will cost. And being a disabled veteran, I know my home didn't cost two-hundred thousand dollars. So that doesn't really qualify as a low-income, you know, project when we talk about affordable housing. It's affordability, it's in that median income and probably a little higher than that median, but it's affordability, not low-income housing. So I'm asking you if you could really do more explanation on this Affordable Housing One-on-One. I don't know if we want to do some type of, like I was talking about Rick Jones when he did the Facebook Live event, but something where we really can discuss the issues and also do an inventory, because from what I heard, and I'm not sure if this number is true, that we are fifteen thousand units short of housing. But those individuals are on this spectrum of not just low, but if we look at the very low income, those ones that we have been talking about, they won't qualify for those homes. Those individuals making twenty-seven thousand dollars a year definitely can't afford a house that's even a hundred thousand dollars.
So when we talk about housing affordability, the main thing to keep in mind is that housing becomes unaffordable, unaffordable when the housing costs exceed thirty percent. If the housing costs or the amount that people are paying for housing exceeds thirty percent of their income, they're considered cost burden. It's expertly detailed within the guide that I've provided. So if you want more information on a one-on-one or a group set, we would love to sit down and talk to you and just really drill into what makes housing affordable. And then maybe through some of those conversations, we can talk about strategies and things that we can do locally to help drive housing affordability here.
So I just wanted to say thank you and thank you for giving us this. It's a really great guide.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Huff.
Director Scott, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First, first and foremost, thank you for being boots on the ground since you arrived. And the fact that Counselor Tucker got information from Gwinnett County, I'm not surprised. That's your old stomping grounds. And we were, we were extremely happy that, from the way you presented yourself when you came in and your background and everything, that Gwinnett County was doing a lot of great things then. So I told you, I was hoping you were bringing a lot of that with you. And that thirty percent piece you mentioned, that used to be the safety net when I started to buy my first home in the eighties, could not qualify if it was over thirty percent. Now, that safety net to make sure you could always pay your bills and not lose your home.
Yep, that's it.
So make sure you push that and make sure they understand it.
I will do just that.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Woodson.
Yes. Mr. Scott, thank you, Robert, very much for this. It's awesome, the one-on-one. Can we put a link of that, like, on the website where people can see it and have it handy where they? I'm sorry, I see in your face.
No, I just, I just don't have an electronic version as of yet. This is hot off the press. I apologize that we don't have it in that format, but I promise you, I will work to make that happen.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't have to.
I know, I know. I'm sorry.
Oh, my God. I just want to make sure that, you know, if people want to get a copy of it, to be able to read it, and they can't come or something, they can go on the website and pull it up. I'll talk to Michael Keane in a program that I'm going to be doing shortly, and we'll invite you to come and speak about affordable housing and what it really means. I think it's very, very important to understand that it's thirty percent of your income. When a lot of developers and individuals come here and talk about affordable housing, I've always looked at them like they're crazy because for them, affordable housing, but to everyday individual, just like Counselor Tucker said, it's not that easy. And I believe that we can, and we had a slight little conversation, I think we can get into affordable housing for those individuals that fall twenty-seven to thirty thousand dollars below. I think we should have a workshop and a conversation on that. How can we, how can we do that, especially with all the property that we have available of our own? How much of that could we do? And I'm just throwing out in the air, I'm not saying go do it, just throwing out there food for thought. You know, some of the properties that we own, how can we take those properties, turn them around to be affordable housing for people that make thirty thousand or less? For a family of two or four. So just a little seed for you in there. Thank you very much. You're doing an outstanding job. I don't know how you do it. You're like a one-man show, but I do appreciate you taking my calls and answering my, all my questions and for me harassing you. So have a blessed day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Davis.
Director Scott, thank you for coming tonight. I just wanted to highlight on what Counselor Tucker was talking about, and they've heard me say this before, about the A in affordability. And I think one of the things for me, working through one of the projects that we talked so much about recently is determining, are we really putting A in affordability? And then when we talk about the A, who exactly are we referring to that needs affordable housing? I think those are really, really important things. And if that, we, if the city is getting involved in this, what I call taxpayer equity, if we've got equity in the deal, then we make, need to make sure that we are always putting that A in affordability. So, you know, the scope, you know, trying to figure that out, but, you know, in my heart, it's people who are truly in need that need the benefit and they need to get the direct benefit. And that, to me, is a return on the investment that we're putting into affordability, the A in affordability. So, you know, I, you know, I know you've got this little brochure. I don't think I have it. Is it in the blue bag?
Bookbag.
If it's not, I'll make sure you have it before you leave.
Okay, but I, you know, I mean, I really think the city needs to, to just really understand that and focus on that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Have you spoken with Pat Frye or Louis Robinson about the program that they have with the tenants and the concierge? Well, I call it a concierge, but someone that takes over the tenants and watches over them?
Absolutely. We have healthy relationships with all our partners. In fact, we've worked with, with them to, when Georgia Rental Assistance was first introduced, they have been valuable partners to help us bring more than a hundred and seventeen landlords to the table to discuss the opportunities available to both them as well as those tenants, to be able to preserve that affordability of keeping people where they are. So absolutely, not only do we partner with them and work through things with them, we work with things with the Housing Authority, we work through Affordable Housing with Neighborhoods and Neighborhood Housing. So we are actively, as Counselor Huff said, boots on the ground, trying to create those relationships that will allow for us to create something sustainable and systemic.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott, I think that's all the questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, next I've got the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Update. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
This is the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Update that I've provided at the last several meetings. Again, we are just trying to get the information out to the citizens so that they're aware of what's on the ballot, May twenty-fourth, and so they can make an educated decision. You have heard this, but we're talking also to all those watching on CCG TV. But we are part of the River Valley region, which is made up of sixteen counties. We currently have a T-SBLOST, and there are twenty-three projects in the current T-SBLOST for a four-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar investment list. Three of those projects are still under construction and seventeen have been completed. And I'll go through the ones that are in Muskogee County specifically, but there are projects throughout the entire sixteen-county region. The current T-SBLOST, we're in, coming towards the end of that T-SBLOST, which will expire December thirty-first of this year, and therefore what's on the ballot for on May twenty-fourth will be the continuation or the renewal of that T-SBLOST for an additional ten-year period, which would begin January first of twenty-three. The first project that was completed with the existing T-SBLOST is the Riverwalk Project at ten million dollars. The Follow Me Trail Project is also completed. That was a three-and-a-half-million-dollar project. The US-27 Custer Road was a twenty-million-dollar project. That project was managed by GDOT and has been completed. Metra, twenty-two-point-four million dollars. That project is in process. It is operational and capital expenditures related to Metra, our public transit system. The Spiderweb Project is under construction. That's a forty-million-dollar project. The I-185 Buena Vista Road Interchange, that's a diverging diamond. That will be the first one that we have in Columbus. They do have them throughout the state, so it will be an educational process for all of us to maneuver through that diverging diamond as you'll feel like you're on the wrong side of the road as you're going across I-185. But if you just follow the traffic, you'll make it to the other side. But this does help improve the traffic on Buena Vista at this intersection. That is a forty-seven-point-seven-million-dollar project, and that one is also under construction. The Casita Road Interchange at I-185, this will be a new interchange, a fifty-eight-million-dollar project. That project is currently under design, and there is right-of-way acquisition happening as we speak. GDOT is managing this project for the City of Columbus. There are two projects that also go into Harris County, portion in Muskogee County, as well as Harris County. This one on State Road 219, that one is under construction. There's another project on the north side of US-27, Veterans Parkway, a forty-million-dollar project. That one is under design, and that one also goes into Harris County. So also part of the T-SBLOST is, each county within the region receives what's called discretionary funds. We have received twenty-two-point-four-seven-five-million dollars of discretionary funds from T-SBLOST. And these are the projects that have been done with those discretionary funds, resurfacing about twenty-seven miles, six-point-seven-five-five million. Numerous bridges have been replaced to include Oxwood Boulevard Bridge, Benning Drive Bridge, Claradon Bridge, Morris Road Bridge, the Warm Springs Road Culvert is under construction now. There's improvements on Victory Drive that was allocated, T-SBLOST discretionary funds, traffic calming, the Double Churches Park parking, Salmon Road Signal, River Road and J.R. Allen Signal, Victory Drive and Tenth Avenue Signal. Those three projects will be completed with T-SBLOST discretionary funds. We are waiting on materials for those projects to be completed, so hopefully in July we'll receive those materials and we can move forward with those three projects. The Reese Road Bridge was partially funded with T-SBLOST discretionary funds, matching funds of almost two million dollars to continue to expand the Dragonfly Trail Network, sidewalks, the match for the Infantry Road and Trail Project, Motts Green Match, as well as guardrails. So over nineteen million dollars of the T-SBLOST discretionary funds have been allocated to these projects specifically over the last ten-year period. So when we look at the proposed T-SBLOST that would begin January one of twenty-three for the region, which is a sixteen-county region, the investment list, the ten-year projection is six-hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars. And the way T-SBLOST works is seventy-five percent is allocated to projects and twenty-five percent is redistributed back to the counties in discretionary funds. And so that discretionary funds is estimated at a hundred and sixty-six million for the region. They also maintain administration of the program with GDOT in their TIA office. And then there's also reduced this for inflation so that when we're looking at the dollar values of these projects, they will provide enough funding for them if they're in the later bans of ban two or ban three. So the final investment list is three-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollars for the region. GDOT is also making a contribution of a hundred and fifty-nine million towards these specific projects to provide a total project investment list of five-hundred-and-fifty-nine million, of which three-hundred-and-three million worth of projects is in Muskogee County specifically. And I will go through these projects. As you can see, you'll see band. Band means what year or portion of years will the project take place. So ban one is in the first three years that project will be started. Ban two would be years four through seven, and then ban three would be in the final years of the T-SBLOST, which is estimated at years eight through ten. So the Riverwalk Repaving Project, that will be a resurfacing project of the Riverwalk for portions of the Riverwalk from the Trade Center to Oxbow, as well as from City Mills to North Highland Dam. The Steam Mill Road Project, and you'll hear me repeat this on each one of these projects, but they, most of the projects include sidewalks, a multi-use trail, streetscapes, pedestrian, and bicycle amenities. And I'll repeat that each time, but, but it's to note that these are going to expand our trail network and also provide safety for pedestrians. So the Steam Mill Road Project would be from Buena Vista Road to the end of Steam Mill Road. It's a widening project from two to three lanes. And again, sidewalks, multi-use trails, streetscapes. This project also includes adding the pedestrian bridge across I-185. So again, safety for pedestrians. The Whitesville Road Widening, this is a widening from two to three lanes, from Whittlesey Road to Williams Road, and also making improvements with roundabouts and sidewalks and multi-use trail. Buena Vista Road Corridor Improvements, this is widening from two or four lanes down to three lanes, from Wenton Road to Ilges Road, and again with sidewalks and multi-use trail. South Lumpkin Road Improvements from Victory Drive to the Roundabout. Again, project includes sidewalks and the multi-use trail. University Avenue Road Diet, this will be from Manchester Expressway to Macon Road, reducing that from four to two lanes to also provide pedestrian and bicycle facilities for the Columbus State University, for their students, along University Avenue. Thirteenth Avenue, Seventeenth Street, and Linwood, this is the installation of a roundabout at that intersection. Liberty Theater Block enhancements on Eighth Avenue, this would be from Eighth Street to Ninth Street to provide streetscape enhancements along that one section, just as we have down at Broadway in front of the Liberty Theater. of the Liberty Theater. The 5th Avenue Connector, this is to construct a half a mile multi-use trail to continue to connect portions of the Dragonfly Trail Network. This would be from 14th Street to 10th Street.
Excuse me, Counselor Thomas?
Why don't you do those two and then we'll come back.
Yes, ma'am. Andrews Road Improvements, this is from Buena Vista Road to Casita Road, widening from 2 to 3 lanes, again with sidewalks, multi-use trail, and landscaping. And then the last project in Ban 1 is the Brennan Road Improvements, again from Buena Vista Road to Casita Road, widening from 2 to 3 lanes with sidewalks, multi-use trail, and streetscapes.
Ms. Hodge, my question is, who, what input does the city have on designing these projects? For example, the Whitesville Road Widening you said was from Whittlesey to Williams. That goes right directly by Northside, I mean, Double Churches Elementary School and the middle school. And in the afternoons after school, the traffic on those roads are, they're waiting in the car lane to pick up their kid. And if they're, when they're doing this kind of thing, if that would be taken into consideration so that there may be some, and there, I'm sure others of these on this list that follow that same pattern. But if there could be something in there to make sure that we try to accommodate the car lane, I mean, you know, they're backed up all the way down Whitesville Road in the afternoon. So who, who does that decision making in the design?
So on all of these TSPLOST projects and on prior TSPLOST projects, we have a series of public meetings. So we'll have public meetings for everyone that's along that corridor, working with the design team, because each one of these projects will have a design team and a construction team.
A local group, citizens.
Well, we'll have a design team where we'll bid out the project for design and then also for construction. Part of that process is the public input process. So anyone that would be along any of these corridors would be invited to an open house. We would have informational meetings, but council would be the ultimate decision on the actual final concept design before we move forward with construction.
Well, I think that the thing that came immediately to my mind was Double Churches School, Elementary School, we need to let those parents know that this is happening. And I'm sure that the school would work with us to get out the information and so forth. So tuck that back, and when that, those kinds of things come up, the school, the schools themselves, I know, are sometime really put to the test as these car lanes are developed. So just remember that, if you would.
Yes, ma'am. And as, as you might recall with the Spiderweb Project, for example, we had multiple public meetings to go over the design of the Spiderweb Project. This number of projects that we will have is more than what we've had on the last project SPOLOST list, so this would require additional public meetings, additional time, but it will happen on every single project.
Good, thank you.
So moving on into Ban 2 projects, if we look at 2nd Avenue Streetscapes, this is from Manchester Expressway down to Talboton Road, again to provide streetscapes all the way down 2nd Avenue as the corridor entrance to our Uptown area. JR Allen at Schaumburg and Blackman, this is east and westbound ramp improvements along that particular corridor. Forest Road Widening, this would be from Macon Road to Woodruff Farm Road, from 2 to 3 lanes. There would be a roundabout at Trinity and Forest, and again with sidewalks and multi-use trail. Morris Road Improvements, this will be from Buena Vista Road to Forest Road, from 2 to 3 lanes with sidewalks, multi-use trail. And then we move into Ban 3 Projects, which is in the last 3 years of the TSPLOST. Casita Road Widening from 2 to 3 lanes with roundabouts at 10th Avenue, North Lumpkin Road, North Lumpkin and 23rd, and Brown at Andrews Road. This again would include sidewalks and a multi-use trail. Williams Road.
Well, would you pause there. So when you come across the Brown Avenue Bridge, and there's the Family Dollar, and there's the Andrews Road to the left, and Casita Road goes straight, and we're going to do a roundabout there?
Yes. Yes, and another roundabout at North Lumpkin and 23rd.
And then you go up just one block. There's going to be a roundabout there as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, on that project, sidewalks and a multi-use trail, and this would go all the way down to the new roundabout at Brennan and Benning. So it'd be that whole corridor.
Right, yeah.
Williams Road Widening, this is from Veterans Parkway to I-185, widening from 2 to 3 lanes, and also there would be a roundabout at Williams Road and I-185. Double Churches Road Improvements from Veterans Parkway to River Road, again to include the multi-use trail and sidewalks. County Line and Mahaffey, this one does go into Harris County, so it's a shared project. This would be intersection, interchange improvements, and also to widen the bridge and to widen Mahaffey from 2 to 3 lanes. And Bull Creek Dragonfly Trail, this is an additional connector of our Dragonfly Trail Network at 9 and 1/2 miles from Rigdon Park, Woodruff Farm Soccer Complex. And then also included in this TSPLOST is an additional $25 million for Metra, and also $25 million for the Columbus Airport for passenger terminal expansion, for a total of $303 million in this second round of TSPLOST that the voters will decide on May 24th if that TSPLOST is renewed. So also included would be an estimated amount of $36.5 million of TSPLOST discretionary funds for a total of $339 million worth of transportation improvements for Muskogee County. If you look at the entire TSPLOST, what it's done for Muskogee County in the first TSPLOST, which was $201 million in investments, if you count the shared projects with Harris County of $57.7 million, TSPLOST discretionary estimated at 27, almost 27 and 1/2 million. With the second round, if it passes, at $303 million, and the TSPLOST discretionary funds in the second round of 36 and 1/2, this would be $626 million of transportation enhancements to Muskogee County alone.
Excuse me, Deputy City Manager, Mayor Pro Tem?
Could we go back to, could you clarify on the County Line, Mahaffey Road? Does that include the bridge?
Yes, it does include the widening of the County Line Road Bridge that goes over 85.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We've had three public meetings.
And that's the last thing on the ballot?
Yes, this is the last question on the ballot. We do have one more public meeting that will be Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30 at Salmon Road Recreation Center. So we'll go through this presentation and answer any questions from any of the public that attend the meeting. This is also located on the city's website, a copy of the presentation, this particular list, and there's also an interactive map for Muskogee County of each one of the projects as well. And happy to answer any questions that you might have.
They do have one. Counselor Huff?
We have just one more meeting for the TSPLOST.
I will have as many meetings as you need me to have.
I mean, scheduled already.
I've had three so far, and we have a fourth one this Thursday, but if you want me to have another one?
No, I just want to advertise the one that you have left.
Yes, sir. So we have one that will be this Thursday, April 28th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Salmon Road Recreation Center.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for our meeting that we had at Shirley B. I would ask if, so it was some constituents, because I've been, you know, posting the meetings, and they couldn't make it. They asked if we could pull it out of the council and just have the TAB portion where they can just, you know, watch it.
We'd certainly do that.
I said I would ask.
And then we can just run that, you know, over and over?
I tried when I was recording, but it, you know, the light was behind me, so they couldn't see the screen so well, but they were watching. It had like 500 or some views, even though they couldn't see it. But I told them that I would ask today.
Yes, we can add that to the, to the website as well.
Thank you. Mayor, the final update is the monthly finance and sales tax update. Our finance director is coming, and I really, Mayor, want to thank the finance director and her team for their hard work and on the budget. And she has gotten very little sleep over the last few weeks, and I want you to know, we appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. I know. So as the city manager mentioned, this is the monthly finance update for the month of March of 2022. And so just starting with the general fund, the general fund is down right now 1.42%, but that is due to the one-time audit funds that we have in the general fund, as well as the OLOS fund. Excluding those one-time audit revenues for sales taxes, the general fund would actually be up about 1%. Same with the other local option sales tax fund. On its face, it's down 3.08%. However, excluding those one-time audit revenues, we would actually be up about 9% in the OLOS fund. The Stormwater Sewer Fund is up 0.77%. The Paving Fund is up 0.38%. Medical Center Fund up 1.42%. All of those funds are tax-supported, and we're seeing an increase right now in our property tax revenue. And so that's why it's showing those increases there. The Integrated Waste Fund is down on its face about 18%, but that is largely due to the infusion of monies, or funding, I should say, from the general fund last fiscal year to automate the recycling, to kickstart that automated recycling program. Without the general fund, lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, without the general fund subsidy, that fund would actually be up, surprisingly, about 8%. The E911 Fund is up 1.85%. The Economic Development Fund is up 5.61%. It is also tax-supported. That larger increase, though, is due to the replenishment of fund balance reserves. You know, during the initial onset of the pandemic, there was a loan that was given out to CCVB. They repaid that loan, and so that's why it's showing that increase there for economic development. The Debt Service Fund is down 2.26%, but that's just due to the retirement of some leases. The Transportation Fund is up 42.34%, and that is due to the timing of grant revenues that's received for Metra. Trade Center Fund is up over 100%, 111%. And it is primarily due to the, an increase in their facility rental revenue. So there are obviously more events going on at the Trade Center, and we're seeing that here in terms of the revenues. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down, it's showing 19%, but a large part of that is due to the general fund support that it received last year to purchase several golf carts for that facility. Excluding that sort of one-time revenue source, they would only be down about 3%. Oxbow Creek is up 8.44%. And the Civic Center Fund is up a whopping 525%. Outstanding over there. That's due to about 1 point million. It is good job because they received about 1.3 million in grant money that this fiscal year also. They're, they are also recipient of our hotel motel taxes. Hotel motel taxes are up about 70% over last year. We're actually up about 8% over 2019. So we're doing better than pre-pandemic levels right now in terms of hotel motel. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax summary, the Public Safety Fund, we've collected and recorded about $20.6 million in revenue. We've incurred about $20.9 million in expenditures. For the other local option sales tax infrastructure fund, we've reported about $8.8 million in revenue with $8.8 million year-to-date expenditures. Moving over to the left side of the snapshot, here you'll see the general fund departmental budgets year-to-date. The goal at this particular point is to have a budget greater than 25%. So the ones that are highlighted here are obviously below the 25% threshold, just starting with the city attorney's litigation. Right now, that's over budget, but we're obviously, you know, defending millions in claims. The information technology is slightly under at 23%. They, I know they've had some end-of-the-year maintenance payments that they've made here recently. Not concerned about information technology, nor employee benefits. We make pretty much most of the payments for, that's out of that cost center at the beginning of the year. So engineering here is listed as being slightly down at 22%. They also just made their first payment on a five-year agreement that we have with Motorola for the radio maintenance. So not concerned about engineering. Fire EMS, slightly under at 23%. The jury manager, that's due to the petty jury fees. And so we'll just keep a close eye on that. And as far as the public defender, being slightly less than the 25% marker, it's due to the fact that we pay that contract a month in advance. So that is the finance update in a nutshell, and I'll answer any questions if you have them before moving on to the sales tax update.
All right. Thank you. Doesn't appear to be any questions.
All right. So the deputy city manager just gave a presentation about the transportation SPOLOST. We also had a SPOLOST that occurred. There was a SPOLOST for the city that was approved by the voters of Muskogee County, and that, the collections for that SPOLOST began on April 1st, 2022. The collection period is for 10 years or until 400 million is collected, whichever occurs first. This additional 1% in sales tax collections is collected by the state. The Department of Revenue is responsible for collecting this money and remitting those funds back to the city. They are also responsible for notifying the businesses that the sales tax collection rate has changed for all the counties. It's not just Muskogee County. There were several other counties that had a change in the sales tax rate as of the 1st of April. But because we received, you know, some inquiry, the city did send out a sales tax notice notifying the licensed business owners with the Columbus Consolidated Government of the sales tax increase. And this is actually the little card, the little postcard that we sent out to them, just notifying them that as of April 1st, the sales tax increased from 8% to 9%, and it was due to the SPOLOST. There was a link that was provided on the postcard to the Department of Revenue's website. And so in terms of our collection rate, again, currently we're at 9%. That does include 4% for the state. Our original lost, it has no expiration date at 1%. Our other lost, it also does not have an expiration date at 1%. There's a TSPLOST that ends, this TSPLOST ends December 31st of 2022. twenty-two. Uh, there's an E-sploß of one percent. It, it ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and then there is the sploß, which ends either after ten years or once we collect four hundred million, uh, whichever occurs first. So I just wanted to provide that little reminder in terms of the sales tax, um, um, at the request of the city manager, and if you have any questions about the sales tax or collections, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Explain to them just a hot, don't go through over that, but tell them what you gave them in that document.
Sure.
And you emailed it also, right?
No, I have not emailed it, but I will.
Okay.
So, um, what was passed out to you tonight is just a summary of what the mayor, uh, pretty much, uh, spoke to, to some degree in the, um, budget presentation for the FY twenty-three, um, budget. Um, our total revenues are just over three hundred, um, and fourteen million. Expenditures are about the same. As far as the expenditure budget is concerned, we, uh, budgeted to expand about thirty-six, uh, and a half percent towards public safety, um, about, uh, ten point nine percent, um, to, uh, public works. And in the non-departmental right now, it's, uh, twelve point nine percent, and that's where we, um, budget our, um, debt service payments and so forth, and so that's why those are, um, really the top three there. In terms of revenues that we receive, uh, general property taxes, um, being the highest revenue source, um, that represent about thirty percent of our total operating budget. Um, sales taxes is second, uh, with twenty-six percent, um, in, um, sales tax revenue, and the, uh, charges for services, uh, that represents about, uh, twelve percent of our total operating budget, and that's for things like, you know, garbage collection fees and the uses of our recreation centers and so forth. Um, so, you know, the budget in itself, um, is about seventeen point eight, uh, million more and, um, than it was for FY twenty-two, uh, which represents about a six percent increase. Again, as the mayor, uh, stated, um, that is largely du, due to the use of fund balance reserves. Uh, these are funds that we previously set aside, um, for the pay plan implementation that's being proposed in the budget. Um, and then there is the utilization of integrated waste fund reserves, um, in order to keep AM Waste, um, our contracted vendor, um, own, I don't want to say payroll, but, uh, to keep them.
Working.
Keep them working, that's right, for our yard waste collections. Um, so these are just really some of the highlights. I mean, these are really, really good things in terms of the cost of living adjustment to all employees that are going to effect, um, July one. There's also a cost of living adjustment of one percent for all retirees. Um, again, as the mayor mentioned, no premium increases, uh, for employees in terms of health insurance. This is the seventh consecutive year that we have not had a premium increase, which is really.
How, how many years?
Seven. Seven, almost a decade.
No premium increase.
No premium increase. So every year that we've received a COLA, it's really been an increase. We're talking about, because a lot of times employees compare cost of living adjustments to, you know, everything going up in terms of health insurance and that sort of thing. We haven't gone up in our health insurance rate for seven years.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, there's no change in the total mileage rate. I'll explain more in detail, um, about the mileage, uh, next week when we do the comprehensive overview. Um, there is some shifting in terms of, um, the mileage, but no increase in terms of the total mileage rate.
Have we had an increase in mileage rate in recent years?
No.
How many years?
Ooh, you would ask me that. I know it's been like greater than five.
It's actually gone down a little bit.
It has gone down.
In, in the last eight years, we've not had a mileage.
Nope.
Increase.
Nope.
And it's gone down, in the last five years, it has gone down.
That's correct.
Don't make me pull my notes out.
Pull your notes up now, I might need your help.
I'm just saying, you know?
Right. So there is no increase, uh, no residential garbage fee increases, or actually no increases that are, that's being proposed for the general government, um, in this budget. Um, the, uh, fund balance projections, obviously, we project that we'll end FY twenty-two with about a hundred and, uh, one days, almost a hundred and two days. Uh, this is lower than where we ended FY twenty-one, but it was, we planned that, right, to utilize fund balance reserves to provide that critical equipment, capital equipment for public safety. Um, some included in the budget, some included not in the budget, as we, you know, sort of ended FY twenty-one, and we saw that we were doing better than we initially thought. There were, there were more, um, investments made in, into public safety equipment, um, that council, um, approved back in, uh, the September, October timeframe. So we do.
What, what did we buy?
Oh, we bought, we purchased ambulances and fire trucks. I believe it was about five fire trucks that we purchased, and.
Ambulance?
I, I, we, we, some of those too, I'm just not recalling exactly how many. I know we purchased, I believe it was, um, four with ARP funding. Was it four? Um, and there were additional, I think there was an additional two or three that we purchased using reserves.
Okay.
Yeah, mm-hmm, for the police, mm-hmm, for the police department to, uh, kickstart the cadet program. To the ATVs for the police, the sheriff's office, um, around this October timeframe, we purchased, um, ten pursuit vehicles for the sheriff's office, as well as, um, some improvements at the jail. Um, the, you know, the lock, that, the, um, the locks at the jail and, um, something else at the jail.
So she, she didn't know I was gonna have to do this?
No.
It's a test. Yeah, let it go.
You can't stump her, though, I tell you.
So, um, the fund balance reserve days, uh, as far as the projections, um, that has, uh, increased slightly, um, with, uh, FY twenty-three, obviously, the budget in totality has increased, so the value of a day, uh, would increase with that. But even with that increase, we still project that we will end FY twenty-three with about ninety-six reserve days. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I like being tested.
Mayor, that concludes, uh, my agenda.
Thank you. Glad her oral exam is over. Madam Clerk, onto your agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution canceling the May third and the June seventh proclamation sessions.
Motion approved from the Mayor Pro Tem, I heard a second from Counselor House. Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Oh, we do have a, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
Madam Clerk, um, this, does this negate, uh, I mean, what, what do we do about the budget hearing that we're gonna have, um, the budget?
We'll still have it.
May the third, do, does, do we have to have a, a vote to have that, or what's the deal?
Yes, Counselor Thomas, we do not need a vote to schedule budget sessions, and so this, uh, cancellation does not affect that budget session.
But it will be, uh, pu, uh, public, um, announced to the public and so forth? Or they'll attend if they wish?
Yes, um, any dates added or changed, we will upload that to the city's website so that everyone would have that information.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's passed.
Item number two, this is a resolution changing the meeting schedule for the month of June twenty twenty.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second, Counselor House. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Ms. Mayor, I did want to go over those dates, uh, council meeting dates for May and for June. For May tenth, this is gonna be a regular council meeting at nine o'clock AM. The May twenty-fourth meeting has been canceled, and then we will have the May thirty-first in lieu of a council work session, we will have a regular council meeting at nine o'clock AM. And then for June, we will have June seventh, a regular council meeting at five thirty PM. June fourteenth, a regular council meeting at nine o'clock AM. June twenty-first, a regular council meeting at nine o'clock AM, and the June twenty-eighth meeting, um, has been canceled. And once again, I will have those dates uploaded to the city's website.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, this is a resolution excusing Counselor Barnes.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Crabbe. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's excused.
Item four, this is the Employees Benefits Committee, uh, received a memorandum from the HR Director, uh, submitting the recommendations for the reappointment of the following members, Ms. Shannon Hubbard, Mr. Troy Vanerson, and Ms. Audrey McGruder.
So there's a motion, second, to confirm those recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Did you say recommendations?
Oh, I'm, I did say recommend, I meant appointments. Sorry.
Okay.
Did I say resignation? Whatever I said, are y'all in favor of it?
Yes.
All in favor of those appointments?
Yes.
Say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are approved.
Thank you. Item five, this is an official appointment form from the New Horizons Behavior Health, the Community Service Board, to reappoint Mr. Davy, David Rannieri to serve another term of office.
Motion, second, to approve Mr. Rannieri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's approved.
Item number six, this is a letter from Dr. Robert Wright. He's resigning from his seat on the Medical Center Hospital Authority. Needs to be received.
Motion, receive it with regret, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item eight, this is an honorary designation application submitted by Queen Scott requesting signage on Gleason Avenue in honor of Aldina, Adlina Austin Spencer. The council may vote to send it to the Board of Honor if that is the desire.
All right, there's a motion and a second to forward to the Board of Honor. Uh, any? Well, that's all right, we can go back to it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry.
All in, all in favor of, um, uh, forwarding to the Board of Honor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, and Ms. Mayor, I'll go back to item seven.
Thank you.
This is an email correspondence from Mr. Chris Nun, recommending that the seat of Ms. Barbara Story Jones be declared vacant on the Board of Family and Children's Services.
Sure. All right. Motion for the Mayor Pro Tem, second, Counselor House to declare the seat vacant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item nine, our minutes of ears.
Excuse me, ma'am, Counselor, um, House.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to insert one thing, since we have the budget meeting starting up next week. I believe Counselor Thomas is still gonna be the budget chair. I'd like to nominate, uh, Counselor Woodson to be the vice chair.
All right, there's a motion, a second, to approve, uh, Counselor Woodson as budget chair. Any discussion? Do what?
Vice chair.
Vice chair. I said it again, didn't I? Vice chair. Long day. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, she is the vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Counselor Woodson did want to, uh, send her thanks to the council for, uh, appointing her as the budget chairperson. She had to leave the meeting.
Vice chair.
Vice chair. Vice chair.
It's contagious.
I'm, I'm blaming Mr. Mayor for that one.
Hey, broad shoulders, I'll take it.
Okay, next we have board appointments. Uh, we have the mayor's appointment for the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees.
Do we receive the minutes?
We have the seats of Audrey Hollinsworth, Renee McInanny. Both are eligible to serve another term, and Mr. Mayor is nominating them.
Motion, second, to confirm. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're confirmed.
I, I think we missed the minutes.
I thought I, did I do the minutes? I thought I did.
I don't think we did. Did you record them as being received?
I'm sorry.
I, I don't think we did receive them.
Okay.
Will the minutes be received?
Aye.
Motion, second, to receive the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And they're, they're received. We are not starting at four PM anymore for a night meeting.
Item eleven, this is council's appointment ready for confirmation. The Animal Control Advisory Board, Ms. Patricia Montgomery, was nominated to field on expired term of Lindsey Ellis.
Second.
Motion and a second to confirm Ms. Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next we have council appointments. Nominations from the respective organizations may be confirmed. The Historic and Architectural Review Board, the seat of Kathy Williams as the Historic Columbus Foundation seat, uh, they are recommending Mr. Tyler Pritchard. Yes, sir.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to confirm Mr. Pritchard. Uh, all, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next we have for the Uptown Facade Board, the seat of Alan Udi. The Uptown Business Improvement District is recommending Nikki Giedroich to.
Motion and a second to confirm. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, saying aye, say aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, she's confirmed.
Item thirteen, our council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. We have the four fifty-seven Deferred Compensation Board, the seat of Tyler Townsend. He serves in the Plan Expert Volunteer Seat. The Human Resources Director is recommending Ms. Rhonda Davis to succeed, uh, Mr. Townsend, if someone wants to place his name in nomination. Counselor Davis, is that what I heard?
Second.
Thank you, and we'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, uh, Pastor Johnny Flakes III, he's interested in serving another term.
Second.
We'll bring this back at the next meeting. Counselor Tucker has made that nomination for the Columbus Golf Course Authority. We will place those names in, uh, Counselor Huff has placed those naming, names in nomination, and we will bring them back for confirmation at the next meeting. Okay, we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. Are there any, any more, um, nominations?
Is there just one board position being, um, up for replacement?
Right. Only have one that's not eligible to succeed, Counselor Crabbe. Yes, sir.
I want to nominate Tommy Nobles. Again, I've nominated him a couple times now.
Okay. We will bring this back for a, uh, vote tabulation at the next meeting. For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, the seat of Thomas Baron, he is interested in serving another term, if a member of council wanted to place his name in nomination.
Counselor Tucker.
Counselor Tucker has made that nomination. We also had Esther. Okay, Counselor Huff has placed Esther Radcliffe in nomination, and we'll bring this back for the next meeting. For the Medical Center Hospital Authority, the seat of Dr. Robert Wright. Uh, Counselor Thomas is, uh, recommending the following nominees, John Buchholz, Murray Solomon, and Tracy Sayers. The council may vote to, uh, submit those, forward those to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. If I can have a motion to send those to the Medical Center Hospital. Okay.
Motion, second, forward those to the authority. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next we have the Valley Partnership Joint Development. Counselor Walker Garrett, as well as Monty Galbreth, are both eligible to serve another term if a member of council, Counselor Huff has made that nomination for both.
There is a motion to confirm those two. Is there a second?
And we'll, and, and we'll bring these back for confirmation.
I thought we could.
Next we have the seat of Gary Jones, uh, who has passed away. This seat is open for nominations. We have some upcoming board appointments. Uh, we have the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, and these appointments are those of the council. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sir.
How, how many?
How many do we have?
How many positions do we have available for Keep Columbus Beautiful? Just one?
No, we have several.
Okay.
We have, we have a lot.
Okay.
Right, yes.
All right, and I guess before we go, Counselor Thomas had asked me to remind everybody that, and I think I'm right in saying this, that the Columbus River Dragons, our local hockey team, is involved in the championship series for the second straight year. And I believe, I'm not certain, check the Civic Center's website, but I believe they have game one on Friday night. So listen, they won it, I think they won it all last year. So if you are looking for something to do on Friday night, matter of fact, my wife and I are going, so we're gonna go check out game one, so go Dragons. Hearing no other business, if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.